All right, so we'll go ahead and get started. See everybody from our board. It is 6:00 PM, Monday, March 22nd. It's the Rutland Board of Selectmen, or Select Board, rather, declare the meeting open. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to waive the remote meeting instructions.
So moved.
Whitman seconds.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call vote. Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Stillings?
Stillings, aye.
Clark?
Aye.
City, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. At this point in the meeting, we have next on the agenda, minutes Treasury Warrant Payroll. Entertain a motion for the approval of Treasury Warrant 21-W19 and Payroll 21-PW19.
So moved.
Whitman seconds.
Any further discussion? Hearing none will have a roll call vote. Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Nichols?
Nichols, aye, excluding any COA wages.
Stillings?
Stillings, aye.
Clark?
Aye.
And the city, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Next, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of meeting minutes from the Joint FinCon Board of Selectmen, meeting on March 8th. This would just be for the Board of Selectmen minutes.
So moved.
Stillings, second.
Yes, I got a comment Mitch. I just want clarification on how that notification came out because I did not receive an email from you regarding that meeting or an agenda or anything about that.
Yep. There were a couple emails that went out from, I believe, the Town Administrator's Office to all the Select Board members about the meeting.
Ron, you sent us, you sent me an email regarding the meeting?
If I may, I think in the minutes that we're approving now are the joint FinCon BOS meeting that was previous, that was before our, one of our--
Okay, so this isn't, this isn't the bylaw one. That was the one that I was referring to.
Okay.
I didn't see those minutes yet.
Okay. So I'll wait for discretion on that later.
Did you not get noticed for the meeting of the Bylaw Committee, Lyndon? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know. I assume that my office sent them out, but I don't know why. If everybody else got Selectmen's meetings, I don't know why you wouldn't have got them.
Did anybody else receive an email about the meeting?
Yes.
From the Board of Selectmen?
I think, I think it might have been Erin or Beth, my recollection.
The emails, I think there were two emails and they both came from the Town Administrator's Office, Lyndon, so I'm not sure--
I think somebody can forward that to me because I'd like to see where, why I missed it, so.
I wonder if it might have went in your trash email, in your trash. Let me take a look just to see if it's there, Lyndon.
I mean, I get all the other emails, so I'm not sure why that--
Yeah, I don't know why either.
I would like to see it because I was, there's a meeting I did not appreciate missing, so.
Okay. But Mitch, if you can see his email, you'll see if it was sent to him or not. I don't have it before me, but--
Let me look while we, does anyone have any discussion about the actual minutes that are for approval? Okay, hearing none will have a roll call vote. Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Stillings?
Stillings, aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
And the city, aye. Motion carries unanimous. See if I can pull that up. So let's just move on the agenda and then, Lyndon, I'm going to pull that up while we're talking and we can circle back to it if you're okay with that, so I can find it. Okay, next on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anyone here for public comment? If you are here for public comment, please use the hand raise feature in--
I have a question, sorry. Did we approve, maybe Tamika can help, did we approve both the, the regular minutes and the joint minutes or just the, the joint minutes for this? Previous, that we just approved. I thought it was just specifically the FinCon, but maybe it was both. It doesn't matter. I don't have comments. I just wanted to make sure we--
It was both, as far as I thought.
I thought that we were doing them as a slate for both of them, but if I misunderstood, we can take a second vote on the other side.
But obviously, FinCon's going to have to approve their own minutes as part of that too, so we might have to circle back with them if there's anything that comes up, but that was my understanding, Lee, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. I'm, yeah, that's fine.
All right, if anyone's here for public comment, please use the hand raise feature in Zoom and Peter will flag us down to get our attention because I don't see anybody with their hand raised now, so we'll just move on to the next portion of the agenda. We have next on the agenda, Town Administrator update. So Ron, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few things. First of all, right now, in terms of cases of COVID-19, we're less than 14 cases. The cases have been decreasing dramatically. I did email everyone during the week, just letting you know, the, the state called me, Department of Health and Human Services called me to tell me that we were in red, but it was only during a certain time period. Since then, we should no longer be in red. We've dropped back down to yellow, but it's just a matter of the timing of that and I wanted to let you know what was going on. But we are down to 14 cases, which would put us back in the lower category. Things are going very well, so I'm pretty happy with that in our team. As you know, all our protections are still in place, mask wearing, all of that is still continuing forward. The clinic is going very, very well and as you know, I think, I think all of you know that there was a clinic held in the school system for teachers. I heard really good things about that clinic. It went really well. It was a little bit of frustration that I guess the school system was giving out all kinds of gift cards and little spiffs for people coming to get their shots and some people were concerned about how they found the money for those things, but that really is a school, a school issue. But I know they gave out a variety of gift cards and stuff as people were going through getting their, their vaccines. I have a letter that was sent to me from Sheila Judkins from the Historical Society, and this was really nice. Carol Viner, the daughter of the late Helen, and Ken Viner contacted them and let them know that they would be donating, that she would be donating $15,000 on behalf of her mother to actually fix up, renovate, call it the old burial ground, the cemetery. The mother was a huge supporter of historical things, so she wanted to do that in her mother's name. So that grant is, that amount is coming in for 15,000. I know that the Board of Selectmen normally accept grants and things. I'm not sure if at the next meeting you want to have it on the agenda to formally accept the 15,000. It's specifically for that one cemetery, so I thought that was really good news and have a nice letter from Sheila Judkins, the president of the Historical Society about that issue.
Right.
The Woods House, as you know, we've had some discussion about applying for a grant for the Woods House roof to be able to fix that, that building. Me and Peter, the head of the Historical Society, had a lot of conversation about this, and I talked to you guys about putting a restriction on that building, which effectively would be forever, to restrict that building for only historical person, historical use. The process was just extremely complicated to go through. We weren't even sure if the town would vote through the restriction, and it was a time set on it. We basically decided not to move forward at this time, not to ask for the restriction at this time. There could be an interest in the Board of Selectmen to still put a long-term permanent restriction on the building, but as it goes for the grant, it just was never going to get done in time for the, the required timeline that they had. So at this time, we're not moving forward with that. The, the other issue I wanted to discuss with you, as you know, we had laid off the Recreation Director some time ago because of the COVID situation. I met today with the Safe Places Director, Sarah Galvin, and we discussed the recent announcement that the school system has approved the use of the school buildings for summer camp this year. Summer camp serves up to 75 children a day in the summer camp and is a very big fundraiser, way to fund the Recreation Department. In order to move that forward, I'd have to bring Karina back next week. I'm going to bring her back to begin that program. I asked Sarah to join us for this meeting, just in case there's any questions. We have, I believe, $20,000 in her account. Yeah, more in the Safe Places account, but we have $20,000 currently in the Recreation account. So we have the ability to fund her and immediately when we do signups for summer camp, we'll get all the deposits and we'll have quite a bit even more moving forward in that respect. So the deposits alone will generate another $25,000. The remaining camp revenue generally an additional $110,000. Of course, that has to be used for other programming expenses as well. So that's what's going on. I plan on bringing Karina back next Monday and just wanted to see if there was any questions on that of me or Sarah before we move forward.
Lyndon, see you. Lyndon, you're on mute.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, I was having trouble. My mute button wasn't working. Yeah, I do have a question on that and later I have a question on the clinics as well. So has Recreation at with the Finance Committee reviewed their budget? Because all these expenses are going to fall into next fiscal year, so they're all set and you know that, that we'll be able to open the pool, we'll be able to manage the pool, we'll be able to manage all the programs. That's all been discussed with the Finance Committee?
So the answer to that question is no, they have not gone before the Finance Committee as of yet. You're right, that question is for the fiscal '22 budget. I think I'm comfortable at this point that we're going to be raising the money after a discussion with Sarah. When the money comes in with the camp that we will be okay going into fiscal '22. If we didn't have the revenue, we'd have to consider laying her off again. I guess it, I guess the only fair would be, Lyndon, if all of a sudden something happens with COVID-19, it shuts us off and makes us go backwards from where we are today.
Because my understanding that there was a concern about some repair with the pool as well, that, that's--
Yeah, I think that was going to be my question, Lyndon, was, right. We had a pump that was needed for the pool that was going to cost about $10,000. And I just want to remind everybody too that if, Karina needs to come back for the pool to be open, because I believe she is the only employee still that has the appropriate licensure in order to have a pool open, which is an issue we ran into last year. So we just got to make sure everything's squared away there.
So--
I just want to be cautious because if we, you know, get all these people all signed up, they pay money and then for some reason it doesn't happen, I just want to make sure it was reviewed with the Finance Committee and that we, you know, address any repairs or needs before we get everybody all excited and then tell them that, you know, they no longer can do something. That's my concern.
So Lyndon, it's a very good question and we addressed that today in our meeting, a couple of things there. First of all, Karina would have to come back to do the summer camp program, which starts even before the pool opens. She would absolutely also need to be ready for the pool opening, as you say, she's the only one certified. I was also concerned about the pump that Mitch brought up because I asked about that. The concern isn't that the pump is broken now, but they're feeling it's not going to last that long and they wanted to take care of that before it actually breaks, but it's not broken now. Sarah believes we can get through the year, like any other issue. Who knows if it breaks in the middle of the year or whatever, we just don't know. But as of right now, it is functioning and working. So I think that's okay as well. So the money that we get, we are, again, we have 20 grand in account now. We'll be getting all of that summer camp money in and as we open the pool, there'll be new fees for the pool. And again, the only concern I think that really is legitimate at this point, if God forbid, all of a sudden, you know, we go backwards with the COVID, all of a sudden we got to go back to masks and everything else. As of right now, I think Sarah, and I'll have Sarah address it, I think she said to me that the pool restrictions currently as of today are 60% capacity, and I'll let Kara address that more if it's okay through you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, go ahead, Sarah.
Yeah, as of right now, it's a 60% capacity of what we're allowed in the fenced-in area as long as people are six feet apart. So we had all those blocked off last summer. Masks need to be worn unless people are swimming or eating and they have to eat outside at the tables. They can't eat in the pool area, so hopefully that won't be an issue. I did speak with Karina this afternoon after I met with Ron regarding that pool pump, and it's just something that is getting older. And yes, our, we were interested in having it repaired before it became an issue. Hopefully, it won't be an issue this summer, but if summer camp starts and we're able to generate all of that revenue, if something did happen, hopefully the funding from a summer camp would allow us to fix the pump if needed.
Lyndon, you have a question?
Yeah, through the chair. So Sarah, so have you discussed how you would manage the 60%? Will you put time limits on people in the pool or, you know, to be fair to everybody that has memberships?
Right. Last year, we ended up not doing season passes because we didn't want to have to have people pay for a full season pass and then show up at the pool and us have to tell them, oh, I'm sorry, we're full. So we ended up selling day passes in four-hour increments that people could purchase online in advance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ron, if I can, just one more question. Because the budget this year is what it is, out of curiosity, what is the, do we have a total cost as to what it's going to operate, the total operating cost of that rolling fund, including bringing personnel back and operating the pool? Like, what is it that we need to bring into that fund so that we do not have to use any general funding for, if we needed the repair, for example?
Was that to me or to Ron?
I think, to you, Mr. Chairman, I think Sarah's better to you. I mean, I, I think the revenues are there, but, but his, his concern is legitimate of, is it going to, do you see any point in terms of the revenues coming in, expenses, that we would have to go through the general fund budget because we obviously don't have money on the general fund budget to deal with it?
I don't know. In a normal year, when we run the summer fund program, about 50% of that program, or 50% of the revenue that we take in covers salary, wages, materials and equipment. And the remaining 50% we keep in the revolving fund to run other programs or pay for other expenses. So we would have that money there and just have to put it towards the pump instead of using it down the road for something else later in the year.
Yeah, I think my only concern, first, I want to just go on the record and say that I think this kind of programming, particularly for kids in this environment, is one of the more important things, I think, that we're going to do as a community. So I certainly appreciate your and Karina's work. My only concern is, given the budget the way it is, and I trust Ron, if Ron's looking at the numbers and saying that this is going to be okay, we just, we need to know as things progress because we've had years where that revolving fund did not cover the capital expenses that were necessary for repairs and we just, we can't be in that situation again because it could get down to, we might have to close the pool, we might have to do something because we don't have that capital and that's certainly something we don't want to do. So if anything starts to come up or you flag anything, you know, please let us know so we can work together to try to resolve that before it becomes a bigger issue.
We have underwater pool masters usually comes out in mid-April to start the opening process, so the first thing they'll do is start looking at that pump. So at that point in time, if we're made aware of anything, we'll make sure to go to Ron and go to you guys immediately.
A couple of points, Mr. Chairman, here, just, just so everyone understands. Right now, they're getting tons of phone calls from parents who are trying to sign up the kids for summer camp, and we need to start that because if we don't, parents are going to start looking for other places to send their kids for summer. But that's why it's kind of imperative we get this ball rolling and get Karina back to do this summer camp work. Secondarily, in terms of the COVID-19, we had a lot of conversation about the state guidelines because Sarah was making it very clear to me that she has to follow a prescribed set of state guidelines as to open the pool and running recreational programs. So it's not even a local kind of decision, it's something we have to follow in terms of the state requirements. Is that correct, Sarah?
Yeah, we have to follow Board of Health regs for summer camps and then also because we're housed in the school, we'll have to follow any DUCI regs that are above and beyond the Board of Health regs.
Okay, great. How was it, out of curiosity, Sarah, and this is more of a question through Ron to you, if I may, Ron. In working with the DUCI regs, have you run into any conflicts between the school administration and the DUCI regs in terms of that being implemented or has everything kind of run smoothly in terms of how to use that?
Everything so far has been smoothly. I met with the principal at NAQAG last week to kind of review any differences from what they have to do and what we have to do. They're all pretty much, you know, pretty similar, just a few extra things, like we're not allowed to have any parents coming in and out of the building during pickup and drop off, so we will accommodate that. It'll be outside pickup, outside drop off, but really not too much.
That's great. Well, again, thank you for the work you're doing. Does anybody else on the board have any questions? Otherwise, I think we don't need a motion. We just, you know, Ron updated us, so, Lyndon, go ahead.
My, my question is still on, on the COVID if we're done with records, so. Maybe I'll set with recreation.
Yeah, if, if everyone's fine, I think we're all set. Can move on.
So Ron--
We appreciate it.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you very much.
Ron, as far as the clinics, do you know how many clinics we've had to date?
No, I haven't asked him for that count, Lyndon, so I, I don't know. I know that Seth is living at the library, but I did, I haven't asked him for a specific number account. I'd be happy to ask Seth to give me kind of a report on where they're at. I know that they've been moving, you know, they moved now through the teachers and did the clinic in the schools and I heard, you know, raving about how great they were with the school system. But I'd be happy to ask Seth, he'd like to know the total number of clinics and would you like to know the number of people served as well?
It'd be nice to know numbers, but I'd be curious of the number of clinics. And I do, did hear that the school one went well and that, you know, Kim and, and Anne went and showed their support. I'm not sure, have, have you been to the clinics? Do you attend the clinics?
Yeah, I, I've been in and out a little bit, but no, it's really been Seth that's kind of been leading the effort there. I do want to notate something though, just to be clear, because I signed a couple last week and I wanted to let the board know about it, and thank you for kind of reminding me. They, they're hiring a number of nurses and stuff for that clinic, that it's all going to be completely reimbursed through FEMA. But there was a big meeting with FEMA talking about that exact issue that they needed to staff that clinic and Seth has been doing that hiring of nurses. And as you remember, at the last, I think it was the last meeting or maybe the meeting before, we made the Public Health Board members special employees so that they could get some money as well. So that, the both of those issues are being addressed, but it could be, I mean, I've signed two nurses already. They're effectively temporary workers paid for under the FEMA money, but Seth tells me there's going to be a bunch more oncoming for the clinic itself. While it's 100% reimbursable, I brought Becky into the conversation only because, you know, we have to float the money for those salaries for a short period of time till we get the reimbursement. So Becky, at this point in time, is comfortable that we can float the money to get us to the reimbursement from, from FEMA.
Okay, so I mean, so I just want to make sure if you are going to the clinics that you're, you're being sure to express our appreciation to the staff and the volunteers for all the work they're doing.
I--
Like I said, I know that Kim and Anne went and they showed their support at the school, but I just want to be sure that we're recognizing because there's a lot of people that are putting a lot of time. And, and another question I had is on staff that are town employees working at, at their regular time. Are we getting some kind of like an indirect reimbursement for that time that staff is putting into the state clinic?
Yeah, so any time that our staff members are working there, Seth should be recording that time for reimbursement for that time, yes. But mostly now, you know, we're trying to keep, we've tried to reduce the time of Lynn, who is a regular there, we're trying to reduce her time to get her back to the departments because she actually, believe it or not, still has building inspector work and health work to do other than that. So we're trying to get her back as we hired that part-time woman, I don't remember her name, we hired her for over there, and she's working more hours than we suspected as well. So they're trying to staff it through non-employees. I'm not sure how much time specifically Seth is billing to the clinic. It must be pretty significant because every time I call him, that's where he's at. So and to your question, I'll be happy, I've said the appreciation about all the people working at those clinics on a pretty regular basis, but truthfully, I haven't done it personally to them. So Lyndon, I'm making a point tomorrow, the next day, to go over and thank the actual workers there on behalf of the Board of Selectmen as well, okay?
I appreciate that and, you know, I'll try to make it over to one as well. I, I haven't yet as of yet, but I think it's important that they, they know that we appreciate the work they're doing, so.
It's a good point and I'll make sure I do it.
Thank you.
All right. I think, Ron, if you want to move on with your update?
I'm done. That was my, that was my last issue for the update, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Okay. And just as a quick circle back, Lyndon, there were two emails that had gone out about that bylaw review on the 28th and the 11th, as well as some correspondence back and forth from, I think, Ron's office, and that it was posted the week prior by the clerk.
It was, yeah, it was posted on Thursday afternoon and it was a Monday meeting. I didn't, I didn't realize that when there's emergency meeting that we couldn't discuss and schedule one of our meetings. But if you can forward me those emails, just so I can see where they were sent, I would appreciate that.
It was the, I don't know if you're using the, the new townofrutland.org, but it would be the L. Nichols@townofrutland.org.
Yeah, I got, I got all the other emails. I got all the stuff for this meeting. I got nothing on that meeting.
Okay.
If you can forward that over, that'd be great.
If it was sent out, Lyndon, it would have, for some reason, it had to go to your junk box then, so take a look, because if it was sent out right and it's not in your regular email, only other place I can think of is in that junk box for some reason. Sometimes that stuff happens, but take a look and see if that's where it might be.
Yeah, and it wasn't an emergency meeting. I think Peter had asked a while back, this, this has gone back probably several months now, for a special meeting just to talk about that because it is time consuming, and I think he doesn't want to take up two hours of one of our regular meetings and we can just have that as a singular issue. And I certainly appreciate Peter taking the time to do that, but I think that was the reasoning behind having that as a separate meeting, so we don't have a six-hour commitment.
I mean, I understand the purpose of the meeting, but typically, we're going to have a meeting outside of our regular meetings. We discuss to see that, that the board is available. It's usually not a two-day, two-day over the weekend. We're going to schedule a meeting on a Monday, so that, that's my concern. And the other concern is that I did not see any mail, so.
Right. Again, I apologize if you didn't get it. I mean, but I think the first email went out on the 28th of February regarding that meeting, so.
And I'm sorry, that was from you or from the secretary?
That was actually from the Bylaw Committee to the entire Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, but I, I don't believe that Peter schedules our meeting. I, I did notice that, go back and see Peter had sent out an email, but I want the one from you as our, as our chair or our secretary with an agenda saying we're going to have a meeting. That's the one I'm looking for.
Okay.
That's, that's protocol.
Okay, we're on to old business. We have a discussion regarding the town charter. I know that the board received an email of concern about this, so we had talked about this last meeting, so we're going to get some clarification on it. We had a proposal for $20,000 for the Collins Center to begin work on the town charter. Ron, have there been any updates?
Yeah. So a couple of things. First, first of all, I was asked when this was approved. It was Article 29, 29, Article 29 from the November 14, 2019 Special Town Meeting. That was where it actually was approved. It was Wayne Walker moved at the town appropriate the sum of $20,000 from free cash to fund the hiring of a consultant to assist the town through the process of drafting a town charter. So that was one of the questions asked me. The second issue really was, why did the contract you guys have before you say 22,000 and the amount was 20,000? I had talked to Michael Ward of the Collins Center, and I had talked to him and told him that we only had funding for $20,000. Would the Collins Center do it for 20? And he told me yes, and quite frankly, when we discussed it at the last meeting, I just forgot that we had talked about it. So Michael had, Beth had sent you out the contract, the older contract at 22,000. Since today, I sent you out a new contract. The only thing that changed is the amount from 22,000 to 20,000. And that was just Michael and the Collins Center agreeing to do it for the amount that was actually appropriated at town meeting. So that's, the new contract was sent to you today, the exact same contract, just with a change of 20,000 from 22,000. So we're just looking for you guys to approve me to sign the contract at this point.
Leah, you have a question?
Yeah, I haven't had much of a chance to spend a lot of time with the emails that we got today, but I did see that there were a couple concerns and I think the concerns could be valid. I just wanted to mention that this is a process. It's not that the $20,000 and bam, they're going to give us a charter back. There's an entire process as far as forming a committee and town buy-in and everything for that. So it's a process and it's not a, like, they're going to develop the charter for us and then we poof, have a charter. There's a lot more to it and the charter and the Collins Center's very familiar with developing the town charters, working with towns to develop charters. So it's, yeah, it's a buy-in with the town. So I just want to, I think--
I mean, the, the contract seems to be for the actual written component, though. What, I mean, my question would be, why, why would we pay for a process when we're establishing like a, a committee or something like that? Why are we paying the Collins Center to do that? It just, it looks like it was part of the written component. Was that, can we get some clarification on that? Is that?
So the, the contract, if you read the contract, scope of services, it tells you exactly what they will be doing. So they, they work plan management, they work with the project team to develop the process, to set up timelines and milestones and they do facilitation. In other words, what they'll do is they'll work with you. They, I think I've actually sent you at least one example of another charter. They help you by showing you what other towns are doing and help work through the process to develop a new charter. uh, a new charter that meets your needs. So they'll, they'll look at comparable towns and work with you to, to make those decisions. And they'll guide you through all the aspects of the charter and help with the drafting of the document so that it's drafted correctly. They do a lot of research. If the committee needs research on particular issues that are outlined in the charter, in the, uh, by the Charter Committee, they'll, they'll research those issues and provide the information back to the committee. And they help track and, and actually help do the revisions to the charter itself, charter itself. So the, the, what you're really paying for, quite frankly, is the experience of somebody who knows how to do this process, will do it correctly, knows the importance of the charter, um, how the charters actually work. Uh, and most importantly, I think is trying to make that charter meet the needs of your particular town, because every town is different, has different needs. We also have to look at how we mesh, me and Peter have had conversations about this. How we mesh, uh, the charter with the work that's currently being done by the Bylaw Committee, which is really important because the charter overrides a bylaw. The charter is your, it's essentially your town constitution and, and all the power comes from that charter once it's adopted. So we're also going to have to work very clearly with the Collins Center and Peter to make sure, uh, that those two documents work hand in hand. Um, so that's, you know, that's the gen- genesis of what they do. Um, and then really for us, the next step is actually developing that Charter Committee, um, to start beginning the process of drafting it. So that's kind of the next step that's in the Selectmen's Court is to develop that group.
Tim and/or Karen, I see your hand up.
Uh, it's me, Mitch. Um, see, that's, that's the point I wanted to make why I sent that email out. That, that is not in the purview of the Select Board or the Town Administrator. As per Mass General Law, it is an elected position, if I'm not mistaken by that PDF. So my struggle is, uh, reading that by, again, by MMA is that I thought that that was an elected position. They're actually controlling the funds that is going towards a charter, if I read that PDF correctly. So that's my struggle with spending the money. I'm not saying the Collins Group isn't great. They, they are, trust me. They've been very helpful with the town in the past with, with hiring of people. I just think we're getting ahead of the game here because we have to get the committee elected. Um, there's a process to do that. And i- it's an official election. These people have to get signatures. They have to go through the whole process. So if I'm wrong, uh, the MMA sort of give us, given us a PDF and how we follow that and it's in, it's in a line with the, uh, Mass General Law. So I just was trying to find out when we were going to get that started. And I think we were putting the cart before the horse here. That's just my opinion.
Yeah. And I think just for clarification, uh, the MGL you're referring to is Part One, Title Seven, Chapter Forty-three B, Section Ten. Will be revising the charter, I believe, is what probably you were looking at, Tim. Uh, Leah, see your hand up.
No, I just, I just saw the document that Tim is referring to, his email earlier, um, just this afternoon. And it says that it's a home rule charter adoption or revision. Um, and I was just, I know the home rule petitions often are different than, um, MGL. So I wasn't sure if there was a, that was one of my questions.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Peter, go ahead.
There are two kinds of charter committees specified in different parts of MGL. One is elected, as Tim says, and it has in fact one statutory set of timelines for how quickly the charter must be generated. Excuse me. The other style is an appointed committee. And, uh, they have a different set of timelines under which wo- work may be done. One of the first things you would want to get together with Collins is, is what style of committee you want to commit to as a town. So Tim, I gotta say, it's not actually yet too early because there are decisions that the town needs to make based upon recommendations from Collins. Or someone else for that matter. I, don't get me wrong about that. I'm not trying to say Collins is the only people who could give us that info.
Tim, does that answer your, your, your concern?
No, I just, I, I get that, but we haven't asked the town what they want. I mean, isn't the town the one that, uh, controls how this charter is put together? That's, that's, that's my issue. Seven, eight, ten people don't get to make this decision. The town does. So, I, I mean, having the money set aside, I get that. But we haven't decided on what we're going to do. But I thought, if I'm not mistaken, this town is under home rule, if I'm not mistaken. Somebody can correct me on that, but.
I, I can correct you on that. Every, I mean, to, to a degree, every town and city in Massachusetts is under home rule because it's amendment to the Massachusetts Constitution. However, there being no charter of the town of Rutland, we operate under legis- a special acts of the legislature of Massachusetts and not by our own action by virtue of having a charter. Having the charter is what gives you the, the authority to act under home rule for self-determination.
But that suggestion by MMA, um, was for basically built, making a charter. So I, it, it's sort of me like, are we in a catch twenty-two? That's because the appointed portion I didn't find that wasn't under MMA. So either I missed it or they didn't have it in there on their website because I refer to them as mostly a good group to get information for, for the town. So that, that might have been my mistake in not looking for that because I looked under town charter and that's all they had was the, uh, and it was to uh, it's the word I'm looking for, to amend or to basically, uh, I'm using the word create, but it wasn't, but it was, uh, put together a charter. So that's my confusion. I get that the Collins Group began to help, but I, I, I gather from the process that I read is the committee was put together first and then they and, and if it is appointed, I get that. But I think the committee should be making these decisions, not the BOs or the admin. That's my town admin. That's, that's my opinion.
So if I could comment, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
So, so first of all, I mean, the town, uh, the town through town meeting actually approved the money for this, uh, for hiring the Collins Center moving forward, not specifically the Collins Center, but for moving forward to develop the charter. So the town has had some vote through town meeting because they actually appropriated the money for this purpose. I think that one way or another, I think, uh, none of us are professionals as it relates to town charters. So I think having the Collins Center on hand to start to through that process and Tim, we can be happy to work with them to evaluate both the appointed and elected process and see what the pluses and minuses of both of those processes are. Uh, and I'm happy that Peter is, uh, frankly, more of an expert than me, so I'll include Peter in those conversations. And if you'd like to be involved in conversations with the Collins Center as well, Tim, I'd be more than happy to invite you as well. Uh, once we have them on board, we can move forward and talk about, you know, the formal process for moving forward.
Okay. I, I just, it was more of these, again, I just was basically being that person in the town. Just wanted to make sure everything was following the correct procedure. And again, if I, if I remember hearing this proposal right, they were given a proposal for the whole charter. So I, I guess I wouldn't have a problem if they were, you know, going to spend forty hours helping us put together something. But again, I think the appointed or elected board should be making the decision on if they want to go with the Collins Group or if they've got somebody else. I just, I, the, if I remember the, in twenty nineteen, it was to raise and appropriate monies to free cash to get to, uh, basically pay for a charter to be put together. But it didn't say that how, when, or if that warrant was going to be done. So saying that the town's approved a charter, they've approved the money to put together a charter, not how it's done. So that's, that's my issue right now. The warrant wasn't specific on what it exactly was going to do or how it was going to be done. So.
And, and Tim, just to kind of further comment and thank you, no, I appreciate your questions, to be honest with you. There's not a lot of people out there that help towns develop charters. For instance, you know, I was looking at CMRPC to see if they did this. And CMRPC, which does a lot of kinds of studies, as you know, they're working with us on master plans and a lot of things, but they, they, they just don't happen to do a charters. There's very few. I think Collins Center is kind of the, the one organization that's recognized statewide as being professional in this area. And truthfully, I don't know if there's other groups out there that do this or not. Um, but, but any, mostly any town that does this does work through the Charter Center or the Collins Center.
Oh, through the chair. Ron, I, I don't disagree. I've worked with the Collins Center. They're phenomenal, great people. Again, all I wanted to do was make sure we follow the process. So the town, so somebody in the town doesn't have a question down the road. Hey, why, why didn't you do this, this, and this? Because I, it's, it, to me, it's just transparency is, I guess, what I'm getting at. That's the only thing I wanted to make sure of because I, I know we've made some mistakes in the past and I just don't want that to happen again in this situation. That's all I'm trying to do. It's just make sure we follow the process. And they, and the, the tough thing I'm having is I've reviewed some charters and it, and some of the bylaws that we're looking to put through in a year or so sort of are part of a charter. So that's where I was struggling with the new bylaws and a charter at the same time, doing this, basically doing the same thing. So that's my, again, just comment. That's it.
And, and Tim, if you, if you'd like to be involved in kind of that process, I'm very happy to welcome you. And just my last point, I agree with you. I was concerned because in, in my experience, usually the charter is put first before the bylaws are put first. Uh, because as I said to you before, the charter is kind of the overwhelming document. So a lot of times they're done first and I had a con- a conversation with the Collins Center about that. And they agree, but they say it doesn't, it does occur where the bylaws are done first or at the same time simultaneously. So a big part of the issue is to make sure that there's smoothness, is to get somebody from the Bylaw Committee to actually serve on the Charter Revision Commission. So we don't run into that problem. But thank you. I appreciate all your comments.
But that was sort of my other comment too. My understanding is, and it's not taken away from any work that's being done, but the, it was an ad hoc committee. It wasn't actually, unless that's been changed in town meeting and I, and again, I don't remember, but I thought the ad hoc committee was only there for to take care of getting the bylaws cleaned up. And now it's sort of become a permanent group. And I'm, I'm struggling with that one too, but that's a discussion for a later time. That's it. I'm done. No more comment.
I'd be happy to have that conversation anytime you like, Tim.
I, I see, uh, saw hands from Lynn and Leah. So Lynn and then Leah.
Yeah, that, that was my concern, that we're spending twenty thousand dollars on a study, which is going to guide us. And yet we're going to spend four thousand dollars reviewing bylaw changes that we may need to change down the road. I think it's inappropriate at this time to be spending money to have council review bylaws prior to having the study completed. I, I don't understand where the thought process is there.
Am I on panel?
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I was just wondering if, um, if it would be helpful for us as a board and the public if we had, if Mike from the Collins Center or someone could come on, come to one of our meetings and answer some of our questions and understand their process. I know right when COVID hit, T. Nicholson was working on having, uh, the Collins Center come to one of our meetings and then COVID hit and everything kind of imploded. So I don't know if that's beneficial or not. Um, you know, if we're going to be, if we want to enter into an agreement with them, I feel like we are doing diligence by um, having these conversations because it seems like there's a lot of questions from a lot of different people.
Yeah. And to Leah's point to kind, and to even to, to Lynn's, uh, and looking through some of the information over the last couple of days, based on Tim's concerns and how charters are structured and how towns adopt these. Um, I think we probably need a few, a few answers before we want to move forward. Because of these concerns, and I think Leah, that might be helpful to have somebody come in so that we can ask and make sure that, to Tim's point, we're not spending money now to kick ourselves down the road. That's also to Lynn's point. We're spending money on, on bylaw reviews. We're spending a lot of time on it. Um, we just want to make sure that we're acting, uh, the right way because I'm, I'm looking at, at what, you know, to Peter's point. Uh, you have a home rule charter commission, you have special municipal legislation, um, the processes being outlined are very different. So I think we just need to, to have that discussion, uh, a little bit more in depth before we, we go ahead. And again, I'm going to leave it to the board, but, um, I think the Collins Center would be more than, than happy to come in and, and give us a few minutes of their time.
So I'd be, I'd be happy to invite Michael or, yeah, probably would be Michael Ward, who is in charge of coming you know, to our Select Board meeting two weeks from now. And he's gonna, I mean, he's gonna go over and talk to you about the scope of services are going to be. And I, I understand, particularly I understand Lynn's point about, you know, the bylaws and the, in the charter and the timing of all that, because that was the discussion I had with them as well. Uh, and I was a little bit concerned that, you know, we didn't want to go in two different directions. Because, because if you go in one direction with the charter, you go in a direction with the, the bylaws, it could conflict. And I think to Lynn's question, you know, we are paying for legal review to do a bylaw. And then I guess if there was a conflict between them and the Charter Commission, that could be an issue. I think what was pushed Peter and, and quite frankly, I don't blame him because the charters and the, the bylaws in this town are way outdated and there's a lot of problems with the bylaws. So we need, we need frankly, either a charter or a real clean set of updated bylaws because they're, they're way outdated. Uh, but I would be happy to, to invite Michael to the next meeting, uh, if you want to wait till then to approve the contract. That, that's entirely up to the board.
I think that personally gives us a little bit more time as well for our roles to kind of research everything and feel more comfortable. So if no one has any objections, um, I'll table this until the next meeting and then between then, now and then, Ron, if you want to see if, um, Michael can come out and maybe speak to the board.
He'll give me a little bit more time to look at, um, Tim's issue on, on the elected versus, uh, the appointed as well. So give us, I can ask Mike about that and have a more detailed conversation with Peter and look at those sections of the national law to be clear on that, on those issues for Tim as well. So that's no problem.
Okay. Any objection from the board members?
Mr. Chairman, I have one more comment, please.
Peter, go ahead.
Uh, I, I'd like to sort of answer the questions that asked a couple of times about the potential conflict between the bylaws that the ad hoc bylaw committee is working on. Yes, Tim, it's the ad hoc. And the charter and the intent all along has been to given, to give to the Charter Committee what we have finished when we pass. So they should be fairly well in charter format and ready for adoption as part of the charter. And it would be my proposal that assuming the bylaws get done before the charter, uh, that part of adopting the charter would be to repeal chapters one through four of the bylaws. So that everything that has to do with the charter would be stripped out of the bylaws. Because everything that's in the bylaws in those chapters should be in the charter, plus a whole lot more. So what we're trying to do is not only reform what has been done in bylaws, but to make it highly applicable to the charter process when it gets there. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Okay. So we'll move on. Um, next item on the, under old business is the discussion regarding AMP Energy Solar Field. Uh, and a potential MOA. Ron, do you have any updates on?
Yeah, I, I, I do. And, and let me, uh, let me first say this. Is, is this, this issue gets more and more complicated. And I'm going to try to give you a brief explanation of it. So in order to get what, what's I guess described as an incentive, the solar company needs to involve a municipality as a partner in the, the proposal. So AMP develops the actual solar fields and a partnership would be something like the town, once the solar field was completed, the town managing the solar field, taking care of maintenance and things to operate the, the, um, solar field. Now, Rutland has no experience in doing that and we have no staff to do any of that. And I've expressed that to AMP and you guys asked me to meet with Beth to talk with Beth about this as well. So Beth came up with the idea that there are towns neighboring us, particularly Paxton and others that have qualified staff that actually know how to operate or do work on these solar fields. And by bringing them in to the agreement, sort of a third-party agreement, Rutland, it would be sort of a partnership between Rutland, a third town, a town, and AMP. Uh, and effectively what we would be doing is contracting out all of the work of, uh, managing that solar field to the third-party town. Uh, basically we would get a fee for doing that. And the town that we contracted with would get a larger fee for actually doing the work. So we really wouldn't be doing anything other than contracting the work out to this third-party community. The benefit to the town still is the, um, the, uh, pilot program, the pilot payment uh, for the taxes of the actual development of the solar field. So it, it makes it more complicated. That tells me there are other towns that might be interested. Matter of fact, he's got one that's somewhat interested. Um, AMP has sent me a letter saying they would be willing to, uh, give us five thousand dollars upfront for payment of legal fees. And, um, for any consultant or any, whatever we needed to, to, uh, move forward with this, this particular project. For any consultant or any, whatever we needed to, to, uh, move forward with this, this particular project. The, the issue that concerns me and has concerned me from the beginning and still concerns me. Is that I've had conversations with the Department of Energy. And while this is allowed in law. Because it doesn't, it didn't seem to me to be a real partnership because we weren't going to do anything. And that this is, that this is a sort of loophole in the law. Beth claims it by adding a third party town to do this. It brings back the local involvement in the project. And that she believes that it has a better chance of getting approved by the Department of Energy. I have no idea. All I know is it is more complicated. AMP is still pushing hard to, you know, go down this path. And, you know, our first step at this point is. First, Beth has been exploring other towns to see if there's that kind of partner. And then our next step is to write a letter to the Department of Energy. Seeing if they believe that. This proposal would, I guess, pass muster with them and that they would be willing to. Uh, consider supporting this so that the program moves forward. I've said to you and I've said all along that I've, I'm concerned about this because it's, it's. The first in the state that I know of to get on this path. Uh, and you've asked me to explore this more and that's what I've done. I haven't talked to Beth about what town, uh, is interested in doing this. I, I suspect it might be Paxton because they emailed me a note today. Asking more about it, but. But that's where this is. And I guess I'm. Willing to continue to move forward if that's what the board wants me to do. Uh, but I have some real mixed emotions about this, this particular project and. It's a lot of work and I don't know if it will get off the ground or not get off the ground. Now, I'll also say to you. It's soon. We're going to be receiving a letter from Soul Systems. Stating that they are pulling out and withdrawing that project and we're wanting to withdraw from the lease. For the Wheeler Road in Heights property for those solar farms for other reasons. So I'm expecting that to occur. So. Um, that's where it's at right now. And, and you know, unless you guys tell me different, I'll continue to. Kind of see if we can make this work, but I feel like we're bending backwards to, to make this plan. Work and, and it's not the difference between this and the soul systems one is. And both of them, we got the pilot and this one, we're not going to get the lease on the land like we would get in the other program. So. It's less money, but it still could be, you know, a hundred plus thousand in revenues if. If, uh, this, this does go through. So. That's kind of where I'm at. I just wanted to update the board and see if anyone still wants to. If you guys still want me to move in this direction and. Anything could work. I guess at least we can, we could try to make it work through our law firm and. Legalese to protect us and stuff. Uh, it's just a little more complicated than. A, a normal program.
Uh, Mr. Stillings, you can hand up.
Uh, thanks Mitch. Uh, I guess my thoughts on this are if we are looking to pull back or. The, uh, Rutland Heights project looks like that's might fail because the national grid can't absorb. Uh, in capacity, where is the energy from AMP going to go? If they can't, if they can't handle the, uh, Rutland Heights.
I, I think to that point, Jeff, it was explained like Lawrence, when he came in. I think that they had already, correct me if I'm wrong, Ron. They had already purchased the capacity from National Grid, so they have that kind of guaranteed as part of the, the arrangement.
I don't know if it's, but they're, they're ahead of, they're ahead of.
Yeah, not purchased, but reserved. So I've had those discussions. Yeah. That's, that's a good point. These projects are not. They're not moving forward at a record rate in, in central Massachusetts. So there is something to be said for that concern.
So you're correct. AMP is ahead of. The Wheeler Road or the Heights property in terms of it. So they're, they're a step ahead. They don't have to go through that big study. That Soul Systems has to go through. So in that respect, it. It's quicker to get approval, but they, in order, because it's so far away from the grid. The cost of that transmission is much more expensive than the other projects. That's why they.
Follow up.
Yep, go ahead, Jeff. And then Leah.
Just a follow up. Um. It, it's in the town's better interest to have the Rutland Heights succeed. Cause we already own that land and then it's going to be straight profit in there, correct? Can, is there a way that we can. Prioritize the heights, making sure that. If that's going to be the bigger bang for the buck, because we're talking over 200,000 a year on that.
So two, two completely different issues, Jeff. Um, okay. Heights actually, you remember they were putting up 88 units was their original proposal. And then the solar was going to go on part of parcel A as well. It looks at like, and so they originally the heights property, the. Duplexes were going to be put up on A in parcel C. Now that the solar project is. Essentially leaving and that property becomes available, they're now talking about doing all of the. Duplexes on parcel A. And in fact, expanding from 88 units to over 100. Uh, which will, you're correct, if they do that, it didn't mean a lot more. Revenue to the turn town in terms of property taxes and is, in my opinion, a much, much better proposal.
They're going over from 88 to over 100. Is there going to be a hearing on that or something?
It was discussed at the, uh, the past RDIC meeting, Jeff. Um, I think the actual number was up by 120. It was 120. Thereabouts around. And then you're also looking at the, uh. Potentially using a quick piece of another parcel for a retail component. But what they're going to do, it sounded like is the company was going to make some. Um, I guess do some due diligence and bring it back to RDIC. And at that point, I think to your point, Jeff, we'll have RDIC come in and brief the board.
And the, the laws will have to do a public hearing. They gotta go through the entire land year process and any other development we have to go through, Jeff. So yeah, there would be public hearings and it would have to go through various boards. Well, it actually goes through the RDIC. So that whole process would have to be approved through the RDIC.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, could you have your hand up?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I wanted to thank Ron and everybody for doing the due diligence and kind of. Helping fill in the questions that I know I was one that kind of had pushed to have more information and have Beth take a look at things and everything. And I appreciate that. Um, I'm hesitant to, to continue just because I feel like there's a lot of unknown for a lot of unknown potential income. And also, and I don't know, I think that this would be a discussion the board should have. If we were to, to continue. Is this something that the board should look at doing like an RFI or an RFP or something? If the. Town is willing to work with individual and a corporation to do, if there were a better. Better location or closer location, or I don't know, because some of the, some of the expenses. I don't know if, I'm just saying, trying to make it the most, if, if the board was amenable to it and make it the most. Profitable for the town. Um, because that's our job as, as, as the select board is what's the best for the town. So. I'm very hesitant to continue forward. I think there's a lot, too many unknowns for too. Too much unknown potential profit that may or may not actually materialize once we see expenses. Um. But that was my other question then was as far as if we wanted to consider, consider this either now or for the future. If there's some better way that the town could do it to potentially. Have a potentially more profitable opportunity for the town or not. I don't know.
So, so firstly, a couple of things, the AMP program, the AMP. Solar fields are on private property, not on town property. So there'd be no RFI for that. That property is a private owner. And that program is going through them. The only reason they want to involve us is because of that incentive program. That gets in that additional 3%. That, that's the only reason to get us involved. And we would get like some fee for that. Let's say it's a $25,000 RFP. And then we would have to contract all the work out to a third party town, uh, to be able to get them the incentive. So. So that's not the, the solar issue. I think the, the other question though. Is you're absolutely right. When we did the heights property and I wasn't here for it, but the heights and the Wheeler Road, that was put out for an RFP process. And the problem isn't the process. I think the town used a good RFP process. So the problem is, is it, it's, I think Jeff said is. National Grid is requiring all kinds of studies and stuff that's costing a fortune for these companies that want to put up these solar fields. Uh, and it's becoming, they're basically pricing them out. Uh, whereas the, the investment's no longer valuable to them. I think you're correct. The RP process we did use was good. That was the right process, but I think there's just an overabundance of people wanting to get into this program to put solar in. And the lines, power lines and stuff are in substations are really not set up for that increase of new power. So that's why there has to be all these studies and everything else. So I hope that answers your question, but.
And because it's my understanding too, that because AMP, and, and I share those concerns, Leah, about the project. It's my understanding that because AMP though. Because they've already had those conversations and they're in front with National Grid. It's not like if they don't locate on this property, they're going to come locate in some of the area of town. I think this is what they've picked and this is what makes sense to them from a financial standpoint. And in terms of financial unknowns, I think we can certainly hammer that out if we have, uh, an in place pilot agreement. Which they've already shared the conceptual framework for, you know, my concern is, is Ron's concern about this kind of being like a loophole. Um, but purely from an objective standpoint, looking at it, if they're going to pay the legal fees and we have a pilot agreement in place where. They're paying the town directly and we have income coming in every year that's guaranteed. Um, that's where I'm coming from is I want to know that net benefit. I see Linda, you had your hand up as well.
Yeah, I was kind of on the same line as you Mitch, especially if they're, they're willing to put up money to pay some of the attorney fees. And why would we poll it yet if there's no expense to the town at this point? Until we see what the potential full benefit might be. And I don't understand how you would do an RFP if the town doesn't own a property. You do an RFP for somebody to lease a property? I, I've never heard of that. Like I said, at this point, I don't think that we have enough information to poll it and. As far as I know, there's been no expense to the, to date. Um, and they, they, they've been willing, they're, they're negotiating with. Towns and such, so I think we should at least. Have the courtesy to find out what the final verdict is and what information we have before we make a decision to pull the plug.
My way, pretty, uh, Linda, it was exactly that, that there, there is no PRP process for the AMP property because it's on private owned property. I was discussing that compared to the heights property, which was town owned property, which did an RFA. But you, you're absolutely correct. You don't.
Totally different programs.
Very different processes, right?
Right. So it wouldn't work in this, in this instance, not this program.
Yeah. I mean, I think there was just some confusion there and I think Leah was just looking out for, for what the best interest of the town is fiscally and. I think, uh, to both your points. Um, I just want to know at the end of the day, if something comes back, what the overall net benefit. To the town is in terms of the dollar figure and a commitment. And then I think we can make a decision, but to Linda's point, if they're paying all the fees and everything, I'm not sure. How we deny it yet, knowing that there's going to be payments in place. Um. But again, I share those concerns. Leah, you had your, your hand up.
No, I just wanted to say, I understand that it is a completely, that it's an RFP, which would be our town owned property versus private. My concern is if the town's willing to do this, should the town communicate to anyone in town that. We're willing to do this as a, you know, obviously they're watching our meetings so they can see that, that if there were a more. Ideal location, then I totally understand the, the side of that it's a private. Private agreement between them and they're coming to us. So that was just kind of one of my questions as far as how the board wants to operate. Um, and. My concern isn't so much the dollar amount coming in, it's more the expenses and upkeep over the long term. Um, and that, you know, it might be hard to walk away from a hundred thousand dollars a year or whatever the income might be. But then if those expenses end up creeping up and. You know, it sounds like possibly with a third town or a third partner coming in that that might. The physical demands of the town might be decreased, but then the monetary benefit to the town may also be.
Yeah. And I think we're seeing the same thing because when you talk about net benefit. That's your benefit after all those expenses are taken into account. And that's what the, that's the number that I think both of us want to look at is after all those expenses in your projected future expenses. What is the overall benefit to the town? How long is that benefit? What's the marginal utility of that benefit?
Yeah, I wanted the longevity side of things and not just the initial, you know, three to, you know, one to three year, five year infusion of cash. And then as the expenses. Potentially up as the lifetime of the project.
So, so that's where this legal issue is coming in. That's why we've engaged open minute page and the lawyer there because. You know, we have to make sure that if we're going to be quote, the operator of this facility. That there could be no liability placed on the town or no long-term cost establishment for our town. So that, that's an important part that we have to look at. The lawyer says he believes that we can write a contract in such a way. Is to make sure there's no liability for us, but that, that again. It's a whole nother agreement we have to figure out, uh, to protect the town.
All right, um, Jeff, and then Linda, did you also have your hand up? Nope, sorry, that was a while ago. Okay, Jeff, go ahead.
Uh, just real quick, uh, do we know how much revenue is generated from comparable farms that aren't maintained by the town like. Uh, the one on, uh, Pleasantale, for example, or behind the club. Do we know how much. Rough ballpark we're getting from those if we were to just allow. Uh, you know, the fields to, to operate without town intervention, how much of a difference are we talking about? By including the town?
Jeff, every, every solar farm is different because it's, it's depends upon how much power they're sending out of that system. A lot of times the revenue is based upon that. So also because the size of it. Uh, is also important. Obviously the larger it is, the more kilowatts or whatever it can produce. And it's based upon a lot of what the personal equipment. The equipment they're going to be putting on that solar field. Cause what the pilot is essentially is. The same as taxing that property for personal property. But instead of doing that, you're coming to an agreement of what that value of that property is going to be over the next 20 years. So. It's all dependent on the size of the property. Uh, they actually gave us, I think, a. You know, a draft pilot agreement and I, you know, we can look at what that number was over the 20 years. Cause I think they gave that to us. Really, I think that's what, and that has to still be negotiated to the final amounts. But really the only other amount that we're really discussing is the fee to. So-called manage the facility and operate, operate the facility, which I'm told may be 25 to 50 grand for us. And then maybe 75 or a hundred grand for the actual operator. Uh, that's what AMP would pay us just to sort of manage the contract. Uh, and then the operator, let's say it was Putnam Electricity or whoever would get paid for actually like a hundred grand a year to. Maintain. I don't think there's a lot of work to maintain these facilities, but you would pay them to do that.
But don't we, don't we get pilots from the other fields?
Yeah.
From any of the other fields?
All the other fields get pilot, the dollars based upon the size of the field. So you.
What are we talking? You got a ballpark? Say we're ballparking what we get?
Yeah, it, again, it's in that pilot agreement. I just, I just don't have it in front of me. It was sent to the board, but I can reship it to you guys. But there was a pilot that will give you a ballpark and. I'm afraid to say, what I think of is, I don't know if it's accurate and I don't want to throw out a number that may be inaccurate.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Thanks.
I'll send you guys out the pilot. I'll look it up tomorrow, next day or so. I'll send you out the pilot. Again, think of it as a draft pilot because it's not negotiated yet, but it gives you some indicating about the type of money we're talking about.
All right. Any further discussion? Uh, I think we don't really need a motion on this. This is just. Discussion briefing. So again, I really appreciate the conversation. I think everybody's concerns are valid and I, I honestly think. The concerns are closely linked to each other. So I'm hoping we can get some more clarification on that as we move forward with it. Next we have under new business. We have for discussion and appointment, 300th anniversary interest. Um, as you know, we had a table this item. And the, the last board meeting, there were just some questions, uh. That several board members have, uh, had. About the interaction between the fourth of July and the conflicting, potential for conflicting fundraising and events. Um, I believe that almost the entire board was on the, the 300th committee meeting last week. Um, for me personally, I think that alleviated a lot of my concern. About the direction that they're going to take with fundraising. Was very impressed with the individuals on that. So I guess, you know, without delaying any further, if everyone's okay, I'll just go ahead and make the motion to appoint two interesting candidates. Uh, Sheila Junkins and Sheila Dip to the 300th anniversary committee. Do we have any further discussion about? About that word.
I saw on the agenda, it says the 300th anniversary committee and the fourth of July. So you're not, they're not on, right?
I'm sorry?
I see it listed on the agenda. It says.
Yeah, they, I think that they, they both have representatives here tonight. So if they want.
I just didn't want to, um. Disregard them prior to making any motions.
No, I think we've heard from, from, um, I believe everyone, they don't have a chair yet. Uh, but it sounded like pretty consensus that, that everybody was on the same page. Um. But again, if anyone wants to, to take the opportunity before we vote, uh, you know, go ahead and do that. But otherwise we can, we can have a roll call vote. On the appointment. Um, and then if we have any questions for either committee, we can ask those as to how, you know, the strategy is going to work moving forward. All right. So we'll have a roll call vote. Stillings?
So is I, thanks.
Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Clark?
Aye.
And we're city, I motion carries unanimous. And then, um. If, if we could, the board's amenable to it, we'll just take the. The next appointment for the fourth of July, and then we can have a discussion about kind of what was gone over at the 300th. Maybe Ron can give us an update. So do we have, did everyone receive? The candidate of interest for the fourth of July committee?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ben Frost to the fourth of July committee. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ben Frost to the Fourth of July committee.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, uh have we, I guess my only question is that we heard from the chair of that committee regarding the pointer. Oh, Missy, there you are. Okay.
Yep, Missy Pulliam, the chair for the Fourth of July committee, and we are thrilled to have Ben um join. He he's been participating for quite some time, but just not as an official voting member. Uh but now that he's eighteen, um he can join the the committee and and uh and vote. So we're very happy that he's officially joined.
And I'd also like just to add that Ben's one of our volunteers at the clinics and spends endless hours um on behalf of the town and it's much appreciated.
Well, and to hear that he's only eighteen too, he's got a good sixty years left of municipal service and volunteerism that he could perhaps we can tap. Jeff, you got your hand up?
I just wanna add that Ben's also the very bright young man who organized the uh uh the Festival of Trees uh last year during the COVID for the drive through through the Rutland Heights, so uh he's got a proven track record of uh exemplary service, so great candidate.
Well, it sounds like everybody's excited and uh Ben, I don't see you on here, but if you're watching this later, congratulations. Sounds like everybody's got kind words for you. We'll go ahead and have a roll call vote. Uh Stillings?
Stillings, aye, thanks.
Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Clark?
Aye.
And recity, I motion carries unanimous. Um so basically, Ron, you just wanna give us an update because I know there were some questions about the parade and fundraising and I know that during the three hundredth meeting, um you know, in particular, uh there were some members, I see Zach's on the call too. I had some really innovative ideas about fundraising and I think that that, you know, hopefully that alleviated everybody's concern, but it sounds like they're pretty energized about it.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, uh and I wanna thank the three hundredth committee for tolerating me the last couple of weeks since I've been uh chairing their meetings and I appreciate the support that they've given me uh while they've been kind of reorganizing. Uh and I also wanna thank Missy and the Fourth of July committee uh who uh I've had various emails back and forth with and and they obviously support our efforts. Uh first and foremost, I know that both committees have agreed uh that working together is really important in terms of timeline of these different events. Uh for a long time, the Fourth of July committee established a bank account uh with the town and all money that goes in for donations has gone through the town and they spend money out of that. Uh I did talk to Dan and we're gonna do the same thing for the three hundredth committee, so there will be an account established with the town. Uh and we can work that out once we get a chairman in place, a chairperson uh in place for the three hundredth anniversary committee, which I'm hoping will occur this Wednesday moving forward. Um many of the members around here and I wanna thank, I I think it's um say Margaret is the person who is on the three hundredth anniversary committee uh and also on the Fourth of July committee, who is gonna work very hard to make sure that communication occurs between the two boards to make sure that uh everything moves forward in an appropriate manner. You're you're right, Lyndon. Thank you, Barbara. Um Barbara's gonna work between the two. But I did is so far I've set up some basic agendas for them to get them kinda started, the three hundredth anniversary committee and um I think that tomorrow will be my last night chairing it and we'll have a chair in place. Really, what they've been discussing a lot is developing a plan. Uh and a plan that actually meshes well with the plans uh moving forward by the Fourth of July committee. So they're looking at a host of different things which are in their plans and again, that the uh agenda for Wednesday's night meeting looks very much like the past one you guys attended, but basically developing what the timeline is, the type of events that they wanna hold, how they're gonna raise money, whether the different tools for raising money, be it direct solicitation to businesses, selling ornaments or doing different things. Uh the parade is obviously one of the big things. Uh the Fourth of July committee already does the parade. So I think what will happen here is it'll just be perhaps some expansion of the parade uh and adding in, you know, some three hundred things to it, maybe floats or whatever might be that are uh designed in um on behalf of the the remembrance of the three hundred three hundred years. So I think that'll go on, but the 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 fact that the foundation already exists with the Fourth of July committee, I think really helps the three hundredth anniversary committee. I had envisioned frankly that the events would occur between I wanna say June fourteenth, the date of corporate corp uh incorporation in July fourth. But I think that the three hundredth anniversary committee has bigger dreams than me and they're looking at events all throughout the years or all throughout the year. And again, these events can occur through independent organizations who might wanna be involved, so let's just use Jeff's club, the sportsman club. If they wanted to do some type of event for a three hundredth anniversary event, maybe a target shoot or something, they could do it. You know, different organizations could set up different events that, you know, would recognize the three hundredth anniversary, but their organization would do it. So it's not like the three hundredth anniversary committee has to do all the events themselves. A lot of that could be really just organization of the different parties that wanna be involved. So you know, that's the that's the general gist of what's going on. I I've emailed back and forth to Missy, who's been great. Uh and she's looking forward to working with the committee as well and has basically said to me that you know, from her point of view, the two groups would work very well together, which I think is a concern of both boards, that that organizational stuff. And yet she would, they would work very hard not to overlap, in other words, have events at the same time or also I think a a major concern is the whole fundraising capacity, you know, that they're they're both gonna be asking money at the same time of the same groups. And they need to figure out how they're gonna deal with that, so that they're not asking for money exactly the same time or exactly the same group. Those are all things I think are coordination things that the two event, the two committees are gonna have to do and Mr. Chairman, that's what I'd add, I'd add. Uh there's a variety of people interested on the committee here and Missy, I'm sure and Zach, I I see Zach's hands raised, or would have comments of their own to make on this.
Zach, go ahead.
Well, just just one of the things in terms of uh fundraising and the worry about fundraising at the same time. Um Fourth of July, from what I remember, pretty much fundraises from more or less March slash April until the end of Fourth of July events, that tends to be their biggest time, but with us starting the three hundredth stuff now, we have plans for fundraising from pretty much now until the end of next year. So we, there's a very small overlap of time that we're gonna avoid what the Fourth of July stuff does and what the businesses that they hit. And we already have kind of a gist of our own plans for fundraising that happens outside of their timeframe so that we don't overlap that. So I know that was a concern, but I think even just the partial committee that we had last Wednesday or two Wednesdays ago, we've already addressed that ourselves of how we don't want to deal with that and have that issue and how we can easily overcome it.
Great. I I was personally very impressed with kind of your thought process behind that that you expressed last week at the meeting. Um if there are any issues, I mean, obviously, this isn't a year where I think we're gonna be able to allocate any money to either group um from the town. Uh but please come to the board if there's any way we can help in that kind of endeavor. Um you know, feel free to come to the board select and I think I can speak uh to the board on that. I'll see anybody proposing that, so. Um but no, I appreciate you clarifying that. That sounds like a pretty, pretty good strategy and some of the stuff that you you outlined last week was pretty impressive. So, thank you. So anybody else? Jeff, I saw your hand up a little while back, but it seems to have gone down, so.
Uh no, it was addressed. Thank you.
Okay. All right, any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, we should take, I think, if it's okay with the board, we'll just take the one seventeen item out of order, which establishes if the board so chooses a gift account, which allows the three hundredth anniversary committee to legally raise funds. Motion and second, any further discussion on that item? Uh hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Stillings? Nichols? Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Clark?
Aye.
And recity, I motion carries unanimous. Uh thank you all for coming and thank you for the work and uh we look forward to hearing stuff that's involved and uh Jeff told us earlier that he was gonna share his float ideas early this year with the rest of the town before unveiling it. Is that true, Jeff, or is that?
Negative, negative, sir. A secret.
All right, well, I think we can't can't wait to see what what's in store there. Appreciate it, everybody. All right, um next on the agenda, we have a discussion uh regarding the charge for the cable advisory committee. This is something that's been kicking around for a while. Leah, I think to your point, a couple of weeks ago, this is communities where we haven't really addressed this charge. Uh I know Peter has been proactive is uh that group to try to come up with something, so we did have a draft that was sent to the select board um for potential approval if the board so chose. So Peter, if you're still on, you wanna give us kind of a a back, a real quick brief background and we can go from there.
Or, I mean, in terms of background, this started a couple of years ago at a select board retreat when there are discussions about what the cable advisory shouldn't should not be doing. What's that, what's that?
I remember that. That was a, was a fun time.
Um we uh the cable committees kinda took that to heart, although we didn't act immediately. We've been looking at this, it took us, I think, we only meet once a month, so it took us about four months to actually construct this. The last meeting was with the town administrator, I'm happy to say, cuz he helped us polish up some some pieces of it that really helped us out. Um I I think the charge makes sense for what we should be trying to do. We tried to not to step on the IT organizations space, but we know that people need to, someone needs to be responsible for looking at technologies as we move forward. Especially since it is a virtual certainty that one day cable TV money is going to dry up in terms of funding the cable committee.
Okay. Does everyone have in front of them or a copy of the proposed cable advisory committee charge that was sent out several times over the last couple of weeks?
I, if I may, I I just saw an email with it attached from four o'clock tonight or four fifteen tonight. Um I didn't see it before. I may have missed an email. I'm search, I'm looking, but I'm just reviewing it now.
So, Mr. Chairman, too, I'd like to, based upon an email I received today, I would like to make one addition to this as well that I haven't talked to Peter about and I I wanna thank the cable committee for working with me on this issue. Uh the only addition I think I would make that uh that the cable advisory board works with the town administrator for any hiring uh that needs to be done uh for the um for the uh uh public access TV station. Um I just hiring should not be done by the advisory board, that all hiring should come through the town.
Oh, I agree completely cuz I thought we had worked through that.
I.
When you, cuz that's, I remember those words when we worked on it. All right, we will uh.
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I just, I just wanna make sure that no departments are hiring without me. There's a, there's a really tricky, you know, you gotta be very careful when you hire these days to make sure you don't ask questions that uh you know, are discriminatory or um you know, are not allowed under uh human resource law, so I'm fine if, you know, usually what I do just so that they understand my process. Usually when we hire staff, I bring the department head in, we interview the top three or five candidates, whatever it might be. Uh in ninety-nine percent of the time, the person uh tends to be something that everybody unanimously agrees upon and I give a ton of weight to my department heads that cuz they have to work with that person every day. Uh but I I do want the process to come through the office and not allow any group to hire individually.
Um I we, I agree with you. The the number three has been modified. It used to say hire and supervise. Uh and we changed, we specifically removed hire for that purpose. If you'd like us to add an element to ex- to explicitly work with the town administrator to hire staff, that's fine. We can add that at our, at our next meeting.
Yeah, I I would very much like that.
Okay, so let's then, if it's okay with the board, we can table this to the next meeting. It sounds like there might have been a couple of members that didn't get to review it until today. Which I know that this had been floating around a couple of times, so I apologize if if that's the case, didn't get seen. So maybe Ron, when Peter gets you that language could forward it up to the board.
Absolutely, Chairman. I apologize to the board because I thought it was in your packages and uh when I read my package, then was studying it, I realized it wasn't there, so I sent it out at four o'clock, so I apologize. It's my office should have gave you this in uh more time, she had an opportunity to read it. Uh but when I noticed it wasn't there, I added it late.
Uh Lyndon and then Leah.
Is it, yeah, just for clarification, is this a revision to the original bylaw or is this a new bylaw?
There is no bylaw. There was a charge created when the cable advisory committee was first in created many, many moons ago, but that charge has been lost to the mists of time. So I'm sorry?
So this is a new bylaw?
This is not a bylaw. This is merely the charge.
So where does it fall in the in the realm of documents?
It's it's directly under the board of select and we, when we appoint committees, we're supposed to task them with charges, so they have clear direction. This is simply a charge so that the commission, the cable commission knows what it is they're supposed to be doing, what they're tasked with.
Okay, so the select board has a list of charges for different
Yes.
Departments, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Appointed boards, yep.
Right, so every appointed board should either have a bylaw or a charge.
All right, thank you.
Leah, go ahead.
I just wanted to, I think that this was said, I just wanted to, for the hiring piece that you, the language you'll be working on, Peter um and Ron, I think it's important that it's kind of a a good partnership between the commission and the town administrator and not, you know, a a strict hi- I mean, there needs there is that kind of implicit hierarchy as the town administrator, the head of HR, but I think that there needs to be a really good um buy-in from both aspects because the commission are the people that are working the most closely with these individuals, so.
And 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 to that point, Leah, I've I've worked a lot with the commission, as as Peter said and and Paul, I think is on. We went through all these charges and it was agreed by all that this was a good charge. I just didn't notice that one thing that I wanted to clean up based upon uh some information I got today. So the the cable advisory board has been phenomenal in that respect and I think we're we're both on the same page as that. Part of, part of the problem with these charges is that someone before the town administrator was even here, so they really weren't developed in such a way as that they even had the town administrator as part of their process. So now that you have a town administrator, some of these charges have to be updated to to reflect the the new role of the town administrator in town.
It's a smart idea. And I will say too, like, you know, to this point, we have had, good luck, we've had fantastic employees and that you know, in our cables, so for what it's worth, um Leah, go ahead.
And just one other question, since this is the first time I'm seeing, i- if I have any like kind of things that jump out at me or questions or anything, is it okay, Ron, if I email you and Peter, um just so that it can potentially be addressed at cables? Um it wouldn't be anything major. I would bring that before the board as a whole, but I just wanna be able to keep things moving versus, I don't know, I didn't unfortunately.
I I would also add Paul to that list, please, Leah. Cuz he is the chair, so he really is, you know, the guy who should see all this.
Perfect.
Yeah, I think too, i- if we can just make sure we bring those before the board at the next meeting, um then we can have that discussion and then if we wanna make a motion to approve it or amend it or whatever, we can do that then when everyone had an opportunity to take a look at it.
And if you have any concerns, please let us know soon cuz we got, like you say, it's gotta run through the cable advisory committee, so you know, we'll we'll bring it through that process, but we don't wanna keep going back and back and back. So if you have anything, bring it to us right away, okay?
I may bashly. One explicit thought, I'm sorry, Paul, I think I just talked all over you.
Okay, if I may add something, back in two thousand and three, when this, when the committee was established, we were established to be as an extension of the board of selectmen and that we were going to manage cable television reporting to the source. Okay.
Thank you. Uh Peter, did you wanna add anything?
There there is one thing I wanted to call out, a very specific change to get feedback today. It's a simple concept. Today, when you will reappoint, when you appoint to reappoint the cable committee, you appoint to one year terms and the entire committee can overturn every year. We specifically are requesting to be changed to staggered three-year terms. So that we would not have turnover of the entire committee at any time.
I think that's consistent with our other appointed boards, so I personally would not have a problem with that.
Yeah, except that you're gonna have to identify who's on what term as your current members, they can make that changeover.
But it's literally assigning one, one person gets one year and two persons get two years and three persons get three years. So it's during the appointment, during the the next appointment cycle, we would assign individuals to the terms.
Peter, we gotta figure that.
In like two months, so I think we can probably address it then, Peter, right?
Right, I think so.
Okay.
Okay. All right, any more questions from the board? Um seeing none, we will, I guess, move on. Uh we're getting getting close to the end, folks, so appreciate you hanging in. We have a discussion item for what's used at Earth Day MOU. Uh it looks like in front of us, we have for motion um allowing the town administrator to enter into an agreement with what's used at Earth Day regarding fiscal twenty twenty-one, uh the allocation fee and the amount of fifty-four, roughly fifty-four hundred dollars.
So, Mr. Chairman, I brought this before you because as you guys saw, and I think I talked this at previous meeting, that this So, Mr. Chairman, I brought this before you because, as you guys saw, and I think I talked this at previous meeting, that this agreement. Uh, is effective June second, two thousand nineteen, so in theory, it should have been approved by the Board of Selectmen some time ago. For various reasons, that never did occur, and I was uncomfortable signing an agreement that was two years old. Uh, out of the box, I've worked with Helen and, uh, and another member of her group. To, to get the contract set, so we could discuss it tonight. Uh, we will have to negotiate a new contract shortly down the road. Talked with the. With the DPW director, and the important part here is that we have to have a place. For people to bring their recyclables, and that's what this does, if you guys haven't been there, and I haven't been there yet, I've been invited to go there, but basically. All various types of recyclables are, are delivered by residents there, and there's a lot of Rutland residents who uses. They also has a swap shop, which is something you find at recycling centers as well. But I think it, you know, I'd let Helen kind of explain the importance of this to town residents. And the contract term and where we go from here, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, everybody, I am Helen Townsend, I am the president of Wachusett Earth Day, and, um. Yes, Ron is quite right, this is, um, this is a, a contract that is. Yeah, after the fact, um, it's, it's historically been, been signed after the fact by. And it's been signed by either selectmen or town administrators. Um, over the course of, of the various years that it's been, that Wachusett Earth Day has been, um. Functioning, I think Colleen Abrams, I don't know how many of you, um. Um, are familiar with Colleen, when she first started the organization back in two thousand eight. Um, the contracts have been rolling over, uh, pretty much every three years. As they've been signed by the various administrators and the, and the select people. And it's not, um, it's something that can be signed by either the town administrators or the select people. When Ron and I were talking, um, he, one concern that he had, I don't know if you have the. Um, did you all receive copies of the?
They should have, yes.
Memorandum, okay, so you'll notice that on the first page, the only date in this. You know, when I've updated the contract, um, the past two times, uh, once in two thousand sixteen. And then again in two thousand nineteen. It just has a start date, but it runs for a three-year period, so for example, the current contract that. Uh, we are asking, um, you all to sign is. Runs for the period from June second of two thousand nineteen through June first of two thousand twenty. Through June first of twenty twenty-one. And then on to twenty twenty-two, so it is not up this June. It will be up for renewal June of twenty twenty-two. Now, Ron had asked, or suggested, um, that it would be a good idea to put a start and ending date. In that contract, I would be more than happy to do that, um. For the future contracts starting in June twenty twenty-two, I. Don't feel that I, at this point, because I have received several signature pages back from some of the other towns. Um, I can't go ahead and make changes to the contract that some of them have already signed.
If, Mr. Chairman, if I could, Helen, could you explain to them? Uh, what happened with that vote on the increase, just so that everybody understands?
Oh, yeah, so on, on paragraph five, um, and it's too bad, I, I saw Sheila Deb. Here briefly and on all the, um, on the gallery, and, and she didn't stay, but. Um, in October of two thousand nineteen, uh, when we meet annually with. The various towns representatives, Sheila was the Rutland representative. At that time, when we met in October of two thousand nineteen to review, um. Expenses and whether or not there were any increases warranted and, and whatnot. Um, during the course of the discussion, um, a couple of the town reps had suggested that. You know, we should look at a, maybe, I, I think it was a, a seven percent increase one year. And then a, another seven percent increase the following year. And Sheila and one of the other town reps, and I, I apologize, I do not recall which town, it may have been. West Oilston, although I, you can't hold me to that. Recommended because the amounts were relatively small, that it just be a one-time increase. To, uh, of fifteen percent for the remaining two years of this contract. So, for the two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty period. All the towns were still on this, on the former, um, fee schedule, and then there was a brief. There was a, a mild increase between that first year of this three-year contract and the second two.
Okay, thank you for that, I am concerned that when we have increases. And, you know, members of the town agreeing to increases, that that doesn't make it back to the board. Um, as a whole, I mean, that's obviously a concern. Uh, so we're signing, we're signing this agreement, it's already been in place for a year, so we're signing it halfway through, that's my understanding?
Yes, yes, it is. And, and part of that is my fault, due to the, the fact that we had the town rep meeting. After the start of the contract. And then, um, unfortunately, my mother ended up with a traumatic brain injury. So I was out of commission for a while, and then we went into COVID, which is why it is so delayed now.
I think it got slowed down because of COVID, so I can certainly understand that, so. We have in front of us, um, I guess this runs until next June.
Um, yes, June of twenty twenty-two.
But we have already been operating for a year under this agreement that the town never signed off on. But we still have been paying you, is that?
Uh, yes, yes, you have.
That's wonderful.
Actually, it was, uh, similar to the, to the period, um, the memorandum of, of agreement. Uh, that ran from the period of June second of two thousand thirteen to June first of two thousand sixteen. That apparently was signed by all the towns in two thousand and fifteen, so there. No, it is not right, there is.
History of municipal incompetence is kind of where we're going with that, so that's.
And, and ours, I, in.
I mean, everything got slowed down this year, and I can certainly understand, uh, again, I think you provide a very great service, it's just my only concern. Is that when we agree to fee increases, that we bring it back to the rest of the board, so that the board is knowledgeable of that occurring. You know, it sounds like it's seven percent a year, you're following the Wachusett Regional School District model. Such a small dollar amount that will. But does anybody have any further questions from the board before we, we enter into this, Lyndon?
I was just curious of what, what impact COVID has had on the financials as far as.
Um, well, we actually, um, we only have one paid employee, as, as you may or may not know. And we continued to pay him because we, even though we were not. Open to the public for, from the period of, of March thirteenth to June second. Um, when we reopen just the exterior of the site. We had, we used it to, um. Get a lot of projects done that we never have time, which is actually one reason why we have closed this week to the public. Um, to, because we just, we accumulate such vast quantities of materials. Um, that our volunteers generally can't handle it all, just from, you know, from day to day. So we periodically do need to operate these shutdowns, and during that period, um. Mark Kozlowski, our, our operations manager, um, used his time. A- amazingly well to get a lot, make a lot of progress on, uh, that when we had signage, we. While we were reviewing the whole, um, you know, the whole COVID protocols and how to reopen and, and what was going to be safe. We had to redesign some of the, of the shelving and redirect some of the. Traffic flow inside the, the building so that we could open that again. Um, so, uh, and then once we opened in June of last year. Uh, just the exterior, there was a lot of, you know, everybody had spent, so we, we were, we were absolutely inundated. Um, three weeks after that, we opened to receive goods for the swap. Portion of the site. But we weren't letting people into the building, so all of a sudden, we had enormous quantities of material coming into the building. Which of course, all has to be sorted and gone through, all of our volunteer, or most of our volunteers came, came back, we did, we did lose a few. Um, you know, elderly individuals who were, oh, you know, understandably concerned about, um. You know, the transmission and whatnot. So, we did have, um, some impact with finances, but above, I mean. By and, and, you know, I would say on the, on the whole, we've been able to maintain, of course. Not disposing of, of things for two and a half months, we weren't spending ten thousand dollars a month in disposal fees. E L Harvey wasn't coming to the site. We weren't, you know, nothing, none of the dumpsters were going out.
Thanks, thank you, and I want to thank you for the, for the service, I utilize it myself.
Oh, you're welcome, come and join us, it's a great group.
Very helpful with the town during our shredding, and your, my wife is the director of the council on aging, and you provided. Materials for tea parties and other things, so it's been a great resource to the town.
Well, thank you for that, and we just keep hoping that people will spread the word, um. Um, Susan Farr, our, my, my vice president and pretty much our volunteer coordinator, put together a small flyer for. Teachers, which, um, I, I don't know how, how much history you all have, but the Wachusett. Resource Center that used to be located up on the site of the Holden Hospital. Is pretty much what our swap shed has become, i- is. Um, and so we are encouraging teachers from anywhere. To come and avail themselves of the, the supplies and the materials we've got, we got. I actually work in the town hall in Truysbury, and I've just shared that flyer with the, uh, with Joe Sawyer, the superintendent of the. Truysbury Public School Systems, um, because we're hoping that teachers particularly, because so many of them, um. Purchase their supplies out of their own pockets, um, so we're hoping that, uh, we can reach an ever broader group. Of teachers to come and avail themselves of the, of the facilities that we've got.
Yeah, my wife is very involved with PTO and, and took advantage, my office was right next to that in, in Holden, so. Appreciate.
Great, well, please spread the word.
Ron, can you hand up?
Yeah, so, just a couple of things, me and Helen have had a long conversation about terms of contracts and. Now, to your point, Mr. Chairman, about the increased fee for that year. That was obviously after the beginning of the contract, so Helen and I have agreed that in the future, if there's a change in contract. Before that change goes forward, it, we would amend the existing contract. With the amendment to whatever the changes and bring it back before the board, so that will happen in the future, so we won't run into this problem, just. Helen understands that, and we've had a conversation about that, and we'll, you know, we'll take care of that.
Yep, and then I think, uh, Helen, you got your hand up, and then we'll go ahead and make the motion here.
Yeah, so I just wanted to, um, so that in the, so if. Going forward, it sounds like we need to start this contract, um, renegotiation. Rolling probably in around about now, next year. So that there's plenty of time for all of the TAs, all of the select people to get on board, to look over. Um, facts and figures and whatnot, and then. Move ahead, so that it is signed prior to the actual start of the contract, and Ron, you did want the end date in the contract as well?
Yeah, I'm happy to work with you, and then if you want to use me, first, before you put the contract, everybody else, I mean, you can talk about it. I'm more than hap- happy to help you get a contract in place that, that meets the needs of everybody, so you won't have any problems, okay?
Alright, well.
I, I'd also just note that the finance committee in the past had reviewed and, and been involved as well in, in, uh. The, the contract negotiation of the model, is it affects the budget, so.
Okay, let's, you know, let's get FinCom involved, and it, you know, just as a matter of best practice, and, uh, Helen, again. You're doing tremendous work, and we really value the service. It's just I'd like to, you know, get into the habit of signing contracts before they're halfway completed. Just because the public's looking at us like, what are you doing? So, yeah, I mean, that, that, that's great, and we can start that negotiation process early next year and. Um, kind of keep that, that flow going, but in the meantime, if you need anything else from the board, um, you know, it's always good seeing you, and don't be a stranger.
Okay, well, I, I, um, for those of you who have not been down, um. Come on down anytime we're open, Tuesday, Thursday, and the first and third Saturday mornings. However, we are also there Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, just as volunteers, cleaning up, organizing, sorting, culling. Making stuff look good so that people take it to reuse.
On that note, I would encourage the public to show up, and, uh, two, to use the service, and. And I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen allow the town administrator to enter into an agreement. With Wachusett Earth Day Incorporated regarding fiscal twenty twenty-one town allocation in the amount of. Five thousand four hundred twenty-six dollars and eighty-five cents. I have a motion, a second, a little bit premature on the second skip, but, um. Alright. It, yes, it is, uh, we'll have a roll call vote if there's no further discussion. Uh, Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Whitman, aye.
Stillings? Clark? Your city, I, motion carries unanimous, thank you, Helen.
Thank you all, have a good evening.
Um, Mitch? It's Tamika, if I may, we skipped over one twelve and one thirteen.
Oh, wow, yeah, we totally did, I saw Helen there, and we, we did, we'll go back to do, um. One twelve and one thirteen right now, we'll take one thirteen out of order, if that's okay, because it's quick. Uh, we had, uh, Karine, um, had resigned from cable advisory board. Uh, this is a few weeks ago, it didn't make the last agenda because it came in so late. Um, so if there's no further discussion, I'll make the, the motion to accept with regrets, um, that resignation. Okay, any further discussion, hearing none, I'll have a roll call vote, Nichols? Stillings?
Stillings, I regret.
Whitman?
Whitman, I with regrets, I enjoyed working with her.
Your city, I, and she was great, so, um, certainly, you know, wish her well. Okay, and, uh, quickly, Ron, uh, we have, we've had some back and forth, I think, on the, the public property, um, the new policy. Uh, we just want to get that clarified moving forward, uh, for any future, future, uh, issues.
You're right, Mr. Chairman, there's not a lot to talk about here, because I sent out a request of all the town managers in the area asking. Them to send me their policies for naming town properties and received zero. Uh, I've done an internet search and I'm finding, yeah, so I need to continue working on that. I think the, the question is, is, we're not going to discuss this going backwards, but going forwards. And probably if we can't, since we haven't been able to find anything, we should set up some kind of policy for town meeting going forward, so. I'm going to continue to look for some policy, once I find something good, I'll bring it back to the board for their consideration, but as of right now. Uh, I'm sorry, I've come up empty, and if anybody else knows of a town that has such a policy, I'd, I'd love to see it. Uh, we can, in worst case scenario, I was going to call Orleans, they, because you remember the policy I had in the book that. I don't think the town ever adopted, was from Orleans and the Cape, so I'm going to probably give them a call tomorrow and, and get their copy. Uh, but I'd like to have more than one town if we can find it.
Okay, thank you for that update, Ron, um, alright, so moving back into order, apologies, uh, one fifteen discussion. Uh, Detective, uh, John Sanji Bench Donation, um, we had, uh, an item that, that came across for the agenda. Uh, Jeff had met with, um, Chief Monaco, uh, as well as Jelann Sanji, uh, the wife of late Detective John Sanji. And she wants to donate graciously, um, a bench with, uh, his inscription, um, and end of service, end of watch date. Uh, to be placed in front of the public safety building. It's my understanding that these benches, I'm not sure if, I believe all the, the visuals made it into everyone's packet. Um, the bench itself matches stylistically the two donated benches that we have currently in front of Community Hall. Um, and it's just something that I think, uh, first of all, it's a very gracious donation, but secondly, I think it really. Is a great thing for the town, but Jeff, I know that this is your item, if you want to add anything, go ahead, sir.
Uh, well, thank you for putting it on, uh, yes, Mr. Sanji had reached out, uh, some time ago, saying that it was her intention to donate a memorial bench. And, uh, she had scoped out, uh. And, uh, she had scoped out, uh, some, the property of the town common and, uh, used the same vendor as the two Alan Ovee brother. Benses directly in front of the community hall. Last week, uh, she, myself, and the TA met. And, uh, we reviewed the common and we all came in agreement that we liked the probably twenty-five foot by twenty-five foot square patch. Of, uh, flat grass directly in front of the public safety building, just left of the Brian Viner firefighter memorial. In there, uh, for placement of the bench. Uh, there is a tree, a nice, uh, tree that's growing there. Maybe we could situate that. So that it could take advantage of the shade. Uh, that would be very nice. Uh. One, uh, requirement upon the town, it would cost the town nothing. However, one requirement that needs to be is that hopefully the DPW can lay down. Uh, four foot by two foot, uh, slab for the bench to be mounted on, uh, on that. And we would like that. And, uh. In conference with the chief, he would, uh, like to do, uh, the Moses Howe as, uh. Hopefully you're aware, chair, uh, the Moses Howe, uh, presentation on the twenty-eighth of April. And at the same time, the bench should be ready. Uh, at that time. So if we can coordinate with the DPW to get that slab put down there. The vendor would mount, uh, the bench and then we could do, uh, an unveil at the same time of, uh, Mr. Sanji. Uh, and the chief, uh, to accept that bench, uh, and also, you know. Her late husband was also the recipient posthumously of the Moses Howe. So, uh, preferably would like to do that on, uh, Wednesday, the twenty-eighth. Uh, late afternoon with one o'clock.
Okay, just the question, uh, Ron, has the logistics been worked out with the DPW and what's the cost associated with that? Where is that funding going?
I, I, you know, I emailed Jeff. It's just pretty, or I'm sorry, emailed Jeff. I emailed Joe. And asked him about that. And I was just, I was actually thinking of just asking Jeff did, did he see a response? I, I vaguely remember Joe saying that. Yeah, he could take care of it. It's just concrete. It's really more labor than any real cost of in terms of the concrete, because it's a small base. Um, and I was gonna say, Jeff, do you remember? I, I think Joe responded he would take care of it, but do you remember? If not, I'm gonna have to check with him tomorrow again.
Well, well, I didn't talk with him directly, but, uh, they had done, uh, the prior two memorial benches in there. And you could see that it was. Simply poured. It was just a straight pour with, uh, you know, some two by four, uh, you know, fitting it off there, uh. You know, uh, any cost would be de minimis. And in fact, I would be willing to, uh, absorb any cost, you know, if, if you needed that for the concrete. If they had to supply the labor, we have to supply the concrete.
Mitch, I think he responded it was no problem to take care of it, but I'll double check with him tomorrow. I just want to lock that down.
Make sure we can get that coordinated.
Yeah, I'll definitely get it tomorrow.
Um, okay.
I don't see any, I don't see anything in my Google Drive with the images or anything. I trust Nick and Ron and, and. Jeff and you guys all have seen it and are okay with the design. I'm not worried about it, but I don't see it. Again, I don't, it's not in my Google Drive.
So, so Jeff, to, to Jeff's point, if you, if you look at the current benches, they're both black really nicely. They're sort of like a marble. They, they were going to be consistent with the benches. The two benches are already in place.
Yeah, the design.
Oh, that's.
Same bench, same bench.
Do we have a, a policy, Ron, for accepting donations?
So, so grants and stuff often are done and approved by the town, but towns don't always. Have policies to accept donations. Because frankly, for instance, the Fourth of July Committee, you know how many donations you get? It kind of gets ridiculous. So usually sometimes towns have policies. I don't think we have one that says any donation of under five hundred dollars, you don't have to get approved or accept by the thing. But that, that's up to you guys. Uh, you know, most donations are small in nature, but like. I talked about earlier, there's a fifteen thousand dollar donation for the cemetery, right? Um, do you want to formally accept and vote to approve that donation?
I think, I think we, we should adopt a policy similar. I think Worcester has a policy where. Any donation of real property or certain monetary value would be recognized, just because it's simply probably a good gesture for the donor. To have that recognition. Um, something like this, uh, I can imagine, um, it's pretty ornate, pretty costly and. Uh, we certainly appreciate the family donating, um, of that. So. I don't think we need a motion to accept it, but I certainly want to recognize that, that donation and all of the work that's going into it. So Lyndon, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I'd like to have some kind of a policy, because, you know, it could get out of hand where people just want to donate and you can't just have anybody do whatever they want. And just donate it to the town and be accepted. So there should be a policy of review to some extent.
That's a good point, too. If you have something you don't want, you know, you don't want to accept.
I, I didn't mean somebody you don't want, but someplace, you know, it's not appropriate placing or, or whatever in general.
I'd be happy to get a policy drafted up for you guys.
And if I may, Mitch.
Yeah, go ahead.
Ron, maybe talk to Anita or somebody that, um, because she had mentioned something about, I think, town meeting at one point. Years ago had voted in, um, uh, favor of accepting the, the current sign in front of the historical society as a town gift. From, I think, the Lions Club. So I think that there, I don't know if there's an, an official policy already in place, but maybe there's a dollar amount gift or something. I do agree that it's worthwhile investigating just for the up, long-term upkeep, not necessarily, I mean, placement, but also. For items that are around for a while, the long-term upkeep.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a great point, Leah, because that's another issue of concern, uh, something because, for example, last year. Uh, we have all of those welcome to Rutland signs that were donated, a couple of which have been vandalized and removed, and the town had no capacity. To either replace or repair them. In a situation like, like this, where you have an individual donating something with a pretty good monetary value. If someone were, for example, to run off the road and hit it. You know, that they need to know that they're donating it, that the town might have the capacity to repair it. Or replace it to honor that donation long term. Um, so I think that maybe we can look at, it may be a, a policy that, in that sense, too. But Jeff, you have your hand raised.
Yes, I totally agree. And to, to that point, I think if you're going to accept something that's going to be placed on town property, it definitely should. Uh, be at the purview of the board. And then one thing that comes to mind would be the, uh, placement or the acceptance of the two benches for. Uh, Liam Dearden's War Memorial a year or so ago in there. Uh, it did come before the select board. Uh, for acceptance and permission of place. Uh, I know if, if you don't need a motion to accept it, we should at least. Uh, grant permission to place that on the, uh, public property, the town's property in front of the police station.
Okay, I think it, that's a fair point. Um, we can either have a motion to do both tonight, or. If some of the folks like Leah, um, hasn't had a chance to review the actual materials, we can accept to, to. Uh, we can vote to accept the donation tonight with our appreciation. And then if you wanted to wait until. The next meeting to vote to accept the placement, um, that's something we could do, or we could take it together. I'll leave it up to the board.
I'm okay taking it together. I, if it's, if there wasn't material to review over the weekend, then there wasn't material to review. If. It's just the existing benches that are there, then that's fine.
Leah, it was, it was just my submission, uh, the email, what I just said, basically. And then I took the photos of the actual. Piece, uh, through the chair, sorry Mitch, um, of, of the piece where we had in mind, uh, upon. Uh, walking it with the TA and Mr. Sanji in there. Just, I wanted to make it clear, this is what we would like to put it. There's nothing there. It's, it's a twenty-five square. Twenty-five, uh, square foot patch directly in front of public safety, uh, to the right of the handicapped zone.
It, it's a very appropriate place to put it. I know Ron's already reviewed it and I, I trust our TA in his saying that it's, it's safe and in a good place. Um, so Leah, with that, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with taking them together too. But I'll, again, I'll leave it to the board if somebody wants to make a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I do want to say there is, there's MGL for everything, right? Chapter forty-four, section fifty-three, I have not read it in depth, but it is all about accepting gifts and grants. So I don't know what the MGL requirements are here.
Yeah, that's specifically, um, Peter, that's not really, I think, when we're talking about policies. I think we're talking about something a little bit different. I, I believe that that MGL just governs your ability to accept and, and use funds. Um, that's not really, I think we're talking about more ceremonial, like a procedure. Um, for the board to adopt, but we certainly have Ron take a look at it. So anyone like to make a motion on the board?
I'd make, I'd like to make a motion for approval of placement and acceptance of the bench.
Alright, I'll second, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Stillings?
Stillings, aye.
Clark?
Aye.
And Residui, I motion carries unanimous. Okay, uh, we'll get through these quick, um, spring town meeting calendar. Uh, we have to, uh, make a decision on what we want to do with the warrant. So, um, it was proposed by the, the town clerk that we can open it as early as tonight. And then the board will have to make a decision on when to close that warrant process.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ron.
There's just one, at least in my mind, consideration for modification. Now, Saturday, five eight, the special annual town meeting. Knowing that we're going to have some financial issues at the annual town meeting, I'm a little concerned that seven o'clock is too late. I think I would move up. Again, we don't know if we're going to need a special time meeting, but I think I would move it up to five and six. I'm just concerned that given the discussion over the significance of some financial issues that we may have at town meeting. Seven o'clock would, would make this meeting run very late if it, if it comes to controversial discussions.
For town meeting itself?
For town meeting itself, I think you should start no later than six, frankly. Could be earlier, but I, I just don't want to get into a situation where, you know, it's getting late and we have to postpone town meeting for another day because we don't have enough time. I don't know what the appropriate time is. I know when you guys did the, the one with the cars last year, you actually started at four o'clock in the afternoon. Um, I don't know if you want to start that early. I don't know what the attendance is like. You guys would have a better history than I do on that, but I just think. You know, given the, the deficit and the situation we have, and, and some of the potential questions that could occur, I think they could. Take for a long drawn out discussion. And I don't think we want to be in a situation where it's eleven o'clock at night and we're doing this stuff.
It's Leah, if I may.
Go ahead, Leah.
I, I don't, um, I know historically, I think the times have been either five thirty and six, five thirty for the special and six, or. Um, or the six and seven. Um, but I would reach out to Randy also as moderator, and I know. That sometimes he has time constraints, um, and can't get to town at a, for a certain time. Or not get to town, but get to the meeting.
Okay. And also the board. So we can wait to set that time, Ron. Uh, if we wanted to, I just want to get the warrant open. So if, uh, no one else is, is objecting, I think we can open it tonight. And then it just comes a matter of how long we want to leave it open for. Leah, go ahead.
Sorry, I was having new issues. Um, I don't think anybody from FinCom is on. I'm not sure if Karen's still on. Um, but I know generally we try to be mindful of FinCom's need to do the financial reviews, also the kind of final financial review.
Yep.
So just kind of looking at the calendar, how much time back from annual do we want to do? And I think generally we try to do at least two weeks. But I'm not one hundred percent sure. I don't.
Yeah, Anita and her staff really need the time to prep the materials to, um, so I, I, that's usually, in my understanding. We do for best practice. Um, Karen, are you, are you still on?
Yep, I'm here.
What would you like to see for a timeframe? Or generally, what does FinCom like to see in terms of?
This year, why don't we open it tonight and close it on Friday? And that way we'll have plenty of time.
This Friday?
Yeah, that way we'll have plenty of time, because we've got a lot of discussions going. Um, we'd like, we'd like to have two weeks. To be honest with you, this year, I'd like to see two and a half to three weeks easily, because there's a lot of financial constraints this year.
So what if we opened it tonight and closed it on the sixteenth? That would give you. My math is bad, but that gives you, um, let's see.
Gives us three weeks.
Gives you three weeks. Is that, is that enough?
Um, it's gonna have to be, but we would appreciate, I know I would appreciate that time and I'll bring it to my board, but I'm assuming three weeks for. This year, I think that would be very beneficial, because it's a very tight fiscal year.
Okay, does anybody on the board have any comments or questions about that timeframe?
I'm just, if I may, Mitch, looking, that then looks like the warrant would be open for three weeks and then have kind of. Review time for three week, weeks, which I think is reasonable, um, and fair. Um, my question is, I'm not sure, and I should know this with the kids, I'm not sure what week it will be vacation is. I think it's the week of the nineteenth, um. Uh, not that that impacts necessarily closing of the warrant or anything, but just that that's mindful for meeting purposes and everything. That, that people are not around or not available.
People can't be going any place on vacation. This is COVID. Supposed to be at home in the basement. But no, we could certainly be mindful of that. It's fine.
I, I think the three weeks and three weeks is fair. I don't know, historically, off the top of my head, I don't remember how long the warrants are usually open for, but I think it's. You know, in a two to four week range, so.
Legally, Ron, what do they have to be open for ten days? Is that?
I, I'm the wrong guy to ask. I haven't done town meetings for five years, so I'd have to look it up. I just don't know, Mitch.
So I think as of right now, it looks like that could be a good schedule. Does anybody else on the board have any, any issues with that?
Mr. Chair, if I may ask a question too. I'm sorry, what date were you talking about closing?
The sixteenth.
The sixteenth.
Of April.
And is the nineteenth a meeting date for you?
Yes.
Here's what I'm thinking.
But is that a holiday?
The war, well, I don't know, but what I will say is the warrant needs to be. Published and posted two weeks before the meeting. That means the twenty-fourth. Which means you, uh, you guys have to place every article before the twenty-fourth, so that Anita can get it posted. The, so if, if the nineteenth, Leah, is, is in fact a, a holiday, that would push your meeting to the twentieth naturally.
But I think we agreed to not do a meeting the twentieth. They were going to wait till the following Monday is what we talked about.
Yeah, then you, then, then you have to find a way to close and, 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 and place every article on the warrant in advance.
We could leave it open until the twenty-sixth, but that would totally, uh, Karen would probably murder the board, so.
No, no, you can't, because it has to be posted two weeks before the meeting.
That's two weeks before the meeting. That's right. It doesn't give enough time. So it's gonna have to be, look, we can. I'm looking at the calendar now. So the nineteenth, Peter, your concern is, is not enough time to post it?
Uh, no, I think if you were to meet the nineteenth, twentieth, twenty-first, if you were to meet sometime during that week, just to place articles. Then there's, then there's a lot, enough statutory time in there.
We could, we could also schedule a meeting the week before on like a Friday, if anyone's amenable to it, just to place the articles. The problem with the nineteenth is you have, uh, I think Ron is away, and I think Chief Monaco is actually away too, so it would just be us. Um, coordinating things, uh, and it would be on the twentieth, not the nineteenth, because of Patriots Day.
Right.
But I do want to leave the warrant open as long as we can, but I also want to give FinCom the time that they need. Uh, to be able to put everything together. So it sounds like sixteen.
Close at the ninth.
If it has to be posted two weeks in advance, then we've got to close it earlier, because there's no way. Now that means that we're gonna get it, we're gonna have to place it, and then we've got to give it to Anita. It, it's not fair to give it to her and expect her to turn it around and overnight either.
Yeah, I mean, definitely in the calendar, it says that, uh, you know, Anita, Ron provided us that it needs to be posted by the twenty-third.
Yep.
Well, this is, again, you're gonna have to admit, this is, I gotta admit, this is not my field of expertise. But on this calendar, Anita worked with me on, it says special and annual time meeting warrants, close at twelve noon on the second is what she has there. This, so that's in the calendar she gave us, right?
Second of what?
April.
Yeah, I see that, April second at noon.
That's, that's what Anita put on. It was April second.
It is the board's pleasure for closing the date, as, as long as we meet the statutory requirements.
Alright, the annual schedule that Anita had forwarded.
I found mine on the Google Drive.
Yeah, I'm trying to search through that right now. I thought this was, okay, so if we open.
Here comes Anita.
There she is. Just connected the audio, should just be a second.
Yeah, she wanted to close on the second. Of the April.
Yeah, and.
Which is fine, that's gonna be, I think, a lot of work on our end, uh, to get everything on there, but. Um, Anita, you want?
You're muted.
There you go.
Hi, I'm here. Um, there is no, uh, MGL that specifies the time period that. That the warrant has to be open. Uh, and normally it, it can be a week to ten days to two weeks. If you make it the sixteenth, everything is gonna be pretty much. You won't be able to follow all the timelines. You won't have enough time for, uh, to make, uh. Recommendations, so I think that if you close the warrant. Even on April second, that Friday, that would be fine.
Okay, that would allow us to be open for.
Two, two weeks.
The second?
Well, uh, Monday to the second, like ten days, two, two work.
It's two work weeks.
Two work weeks, I guess is what I'm saying.
Does the board have any objections, anything from FinCom?
No, you want a motion to make this so?
Jeff, that we open the warrant this evening and that we close it. Uh, we'll open the warrant tonight, tonight at eight thirty. And close it at noon on April second.
So I make that motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Nichols.
Both eye.
Whitman.
Whitman, I.
Stillings.
Stillings, I.
Clark.
Aye.
And recede I motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Anita, for clearing that up and forwarding along the proposed schedule.
No problem. Have a good night.
Thank you, Anita.
Okay, um. Lastly, we already discussed the, the, the gift account for the three hundred. This came in kinda late. We put it on. Ron, you could speak to this, but I think, uh, this came from, uh, this tunnel. And we'd like to appoint Diane Hertzey, our representative for the Rutland Police Supervisors Union, uh, to our insurance advisory committee.
So first, Mr. Chairman, you need a motion to add it to the agenda because it came in late. As a, as an, as a item that didn't have the proper, uh, forty-eight hour notice.
So it was, it, it came late, it was added to the agenda, but we need to have a motion and a vote to discuss it.
So moved, Stillings. Motion add.
Alright, motion and a second for the discussion. Have a roll call vote. Nichols.
Nichols' eye.
Whitman.
Whitman, I.
Stillings.
Stillings, I.
Clark.
Aye.
And recede I motion carries unanimous. And, uh, we're going to need, uh. A vote to support the appointment of Sergeant Hertzay to the police supervisors, I'm sorry, to the insurance advisory committee. Uh, the Rutland Police Supervisors Union. And the second, any further discussion?
Hey, so Mr. Chairman. Uh, this was brought forward to me by the treasurer collector. Um, just so people understand, it's a group of, uh, people who review, uh, the insurances for the town. Uh, particularly healthcare insurance, and one of the things that the board is currently looking at. Uh, as you know, there's no deductible in the town healthcare plan. And the rates have went up this year by about eight percent. Uh, by adding deductibles, that'll, um, decrease the rate increase. Uh, from about eight percent down to a point ninety-three percent. Uh, and this group has to recommend it, uh, for us to be able to do that. Now, it's in the bene, it's to the benefit of employees who would pay a lower premium. And to the benefit of the town, both would save money. I think the town would save approximately thirty thousand dollars on this. Each individual employee would save money. Now, the downside, just so people understand, is that. Uh, there's no deductible for going to your doctor, your regular doctor, but. Uh, if you went to the emergency room or something, you could end up getting hit with a two hundred and fifty dollar deductible, so. Uh, if you don't get sick, you do great with this. If you happen to get sick, now I mean a minor way, but a larger expense. You would end up paying for deductible, but that's what the, uh, insurance advisory committee is gonna be voting on soon. Uh, this is a person that reflects the, I believe it's the supervisors union, uh, so that they would have a vote in this process.
Great. Alright, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussion from the board? Thank you, Ron, for that explanation. Uh, hearing none, have a roll call vote. Nichols.
Nichols' eye.
Whitman.
Whitman, I, and thanks to this group for considering it too. I mean, they do a lot of work for the town, so thank all the, the members of that group.
Stillings.
Stillings, I.
Clark.
Aye.
And recede I. Uh, Ron, do we have any correspondence?
Yeah, we do, as a matter of fact, um. I wanna.
Asking as a, uh, you know, parliamentary measure here. I didn't expect you to say yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry that I do. A couple of quick things that I wanna announce. First of all. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna make an announcement and I talked to you about this. Um, I guess that when we do the town annual report, uh, the town historically has a contest. Uh, to the photo on the cover of the book, so I think, Mr. Chairman, you talked about putting an announcement out to the public saying. Uh, anyone interested in sending in a photo or something, uh, for the cover of the book. Uh, it would be considered, and I guess it will have some group of town employees evaluate that cover, or if the board's selectmen. Actually, I think the board's selectmen should, at their meeting, accept the winner of that contest and we can forward to you whatever we get, but that, that's number one. I don't know if you wanna add anything to that announcement, Mr. Chairman.
Nope, that's, if everyone's happy with that, I think that's probably a good idea.
Okay. Two is, I just wanna let you know that we did send everybody a compliment, copy of the proclamation for Ralph Anderson Square. Uh, Jeff was kind enough to, to give us the background information. Uh, Beth and, uh, Aaron worked out a proclamation which has all of your signatures on it. So, well, if you guys are okay with it, you should, I think you got a copy and you're packing on that. Uh, but we'll make a nicer copy of that. We're gonna need all of you to come in and, and sign that copy if that's okay. Last piece of mail is, um, from Chandler Psychological Services and it deals with police, fire and public safety division. Just letting you know that, uh, there's gonna be an increase of psychological screening, will increase from. Four dollars or four hundred and twenty-five dollars, so, uh, it's a service, I guess, that the town uses that. Uh, is gonna be increased by twenty-five dollars, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, real quick to go back to that, that event, uh, Ralph Anderson Square event. Are we having another meeting prior to that event? Or is that event, Jeff, what, what's the date for that? I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
Uh, April third, sir, it's the, uh, it's the day before Easter.
Okay, so we do not have a meeting. Prior to that event. So is there anything that we, we wanna go real in terms of logistics? Um, I think the board, it's good to show support, to show up to that event, so. Um, you know, everyone can, can use their own discretion and it's a public event during COVID, so. Uh, we can do that, but in terms of the proclamation. You know, I think we obviously, uh, I'm willing to. See that parliamentary role of Jeff because he's really put it together. Um, and kinda worked on that, if everyone on the board's in agreement for him speaking on our behalf. And then, uh, Jeff, if you wanna work the logistics out with Ron, as if you want Ron's involvement in any way with some of that, that stuff.
I appreciate that. If I could, Mr. Chair, just briefly, uh, yeah, I appreciate that. We have, I have been, uh. Communicate with, uh, with Ron throughout the process and I did, uh. Recently, flip you just a quick synopsis of what we've got planned and for the board's, uh, knowledge, there will be. Some, uh, political, uh, VIPs there, Annie, Goby and Kim Ferguson. And possibly, uh, Congressman McGovern, uh, has been sent an invite, but we haven't had a correspondence back. Um, I would like with the proclamation, um, I mean, it would be great to see the board. There representing and, uh, I'd like to see, uh, you know, the chair and the TA. With the board be able to, uh, present that proclamation as part of the process. And, uh, uh, I think that would be good. I could also put together a, uh, passing plaque that people could sign similar to, uh. What we did at the Moses Howe, uh, and that would be something that, you know, maybe the, uh, the chair could present and then the TA could present. The proclamation, uh, et cetera, so, uh, but anyways, just wondering.
Yeah, no, I can just make an ask is that if you, between now and then, you think. Um, send whatever you need in terms of coordination to Ron so we can disperse it to the rest of the board. And I think we're, we're gonna be more than happy to, to oblige, you know, whatever you had in store. I'm not. I'm not gonna say anything else. I know that based on the floats you put together in prior years, you probably got something up your sleeve that's gonna be special, but.
Well, I, I gave you, I gave you heads up on a couple of big surprises and one put out. Um, but, uh, for that, to that point, I think it would be important that you get there early. Uh, we wanna start promptly at one o'clock. I expected the last thirty minutes or so, uh. So we do have cooperation with Rufus Putnam House, uh, across the way and, uh, it'll be a very, and with, uh. Mr. Buckley of the DPW is gonna straighten up the square a little bit. Uh, it's gonna be a nice, uh, nice event, but I really, uh, would appreciate seeing the board, uh, there. As a team, I think we've sent a great message. Thank you.
Sounds great. Alright, any further questions or items to come before the board for any of the board members? Um, if not, let's see if I can beat Skip before he makes the motion. Alright, I have a motion to adjourn in a second. Any further discussion, hearing none. Uh, we'll have a roll call vote. Nichols.
Nichols' eye.
Whitman.
Whitman, I.
Stillings.
Stillings, I, goodnight.
Clark.
Aye.
And recede I, motion carries unanimous. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, and enjoy the rest of your week.